This is Rick Hackettstaff. We are recording. You can begin.
Thank you, Rick. This is Commissioner Sam Libby, and I'll begin with calling to order this October 21st meeting of the Boulder County Planning Commission. As an announcement to start, due to COVID-19 concerns, this meeting is being held virtually, as you can tell. Information on how to participate in the virtual meeting and other meetings like this has been posted to the Planning Commission webpage at www.boco.org/pc. There will be an opportunity to remotely provide public comment on these dockets in the agenda during their respective virtual public hearing portions of each item, and I'll provide instructions about those sections when we get to each one. We're going to start off with a roll call of the other commissioners. If you can state here or present after I call your name, that'd be great. Mark Blumfield?
Present.
Sam Fitch? I can see you, Sam. You're on mute.
Yep.
Thank you.
Here.
Sam Libby, present. Gavin McMillan?
Present.
Dan Hilton?
Present.
Alicia Gargano?
Present.
Okay, great. Thank you all. So as a few reminders before we get into the actual meeting, to the planning commissioners, could identify yourself before speaking and speak slowly and clearly when you can. All votes will be roll call votes, so I'll call all the names, and you'll give your aye or nay or abstain. Please keep your video on when possible and remain on mute until you're ready to speak on a topic. When you begin speaking, identify yourself as a commissioner. So I would say this is Planning Commissioner Sam Libby. And it may help you if you keep your participant list open in Zoom or keep the gallery view open, you can see who's speaking, of course, in there. So the first item on the agenda is the minutes. Are there any comments on last month's minutes or any motion?
I'll move that we approve the minutes.
Commissioner Blumfield, a second.
Okay, thank you. Then we'll do a roll call vote, so I'll start with Mark Blumfield.
Aye.
Sam Fitch?
Aye.
Sam Libby, aye. Gavin McMillan?
Aye.
Dan Hilton?
Aye.
Alicia Gargano?
Aye.
Okay, motion passes. Thank you. After the minutes, next is staff updates. Are there any staff updates to share? Take that as a no. Give a few more seconds. Okay, great. So to move into today's agenda, I'll give a brief kind of overview of the process before we go into the three dockets. So there are three different dockets scheduled today for the Planning Commission meeting. I'll go into explain kind of how we're going to go through that and where you'll be able to provide comment as members of the public. There'll be opportunities for you to provide comment remotely in any of these items on the ones where we've specified will take public testimony during that hearing period. The order of presentation will be first, we'll hear from the staff presentation, then the applicant if they're present, and then we'll move on to accepting any public comments from any individuals who wish to speak. Some of you may have signed up in advance before the meeting. We have a list of those names. We'll call on you first. If you did not sign up, you're still welcome to comment, and you may sign up by putting your name in the chat along with the docket item you'd like to speak on. We'll also have time on each individual docket where we'll just ask for open comments if you don't get a chance to sign up in that way. Please direct your comments to the Planning Commission. I'll direct any questions that arise to the appropriate parties, and we'll handle that question and answer period afterwards. Once we've heard all of the public testimony, the hearing will be closed, and then the Planning Commission will move into a discussion and a vote on any action that was taken. So with that introduction, we're going to go right into the first docket today, which is SU-20-0003, the Jubilee Acres Reception Hall, and I believe Rainey's here to present for staff to start.
Good afternoon, Commissioners. Rainey, of Community Planning and Permitting. Let me share my screen. Can everyone see that?
Looks good.
All right. So this is SU-200003 Jubilee Acres Reception Hall at 15293 North 107th Street, which is also Highway 287. So we're located north of the city of Longmont on the west side of US Highway 287, north of its intersection with Yellowstone Road. Although immediately within a rural setting, the proximity to Longmont provides access to existing facilities and services to support the proposed use. Given that many of the guests are anticipated to find accommodations within the city, just a three-minute drive to the south, staff finds the proposed location for this use to strike an appropriate balance between the two distinct areas of urban and rural development. So the property owner is S&amp;C Walter Water Properties, Walter, sorry, LLC, and Robert Malloy is the agent. It's owned agricultural, and it's a 36-acre parcel currently vacant. The applicant requests a reception hall use to host weddings and other events approximately 150 times per year, including the construction of a 5,175-square-foot reception hall, 2,760-square-foot chapel, and four 900-square-foot cabins for client use of overnight lodging, resulting in a total floor area of 11,535 square feet. The average event size proposed is 125 guests, with 300 individuals being the maximum for any single event, including vendors and staff. The hours of operation proposed from setup to take down are noon to midnight, with events aside from church services occurring between 4:00 PM and 10:00 PM. As proposed, only one event would be held each day, except on Sundays, when the space would be donated to a local religious organization for services between 9:00 AM and noon, and a separate event may take place in that afternoon. During peak season, May through October, the number of anticipated events per week is three to four, and one to two events per week are expected the other six months of the year, resulting in approximately 130 events during a calendar year. So here's an aerial map of the property. It's bisected by two ditches, the Upper Highland Ditch to the north and the Supply Ditch to the south, the latter of which the owner holds two shares in. Approximately 1.6 acres are currently under agricultural production, and the footprint of the proposed reception hall use, including infrastructure and other site disturbance, would remove approximately 5.3 acres, or roughly 15% of the property from use in future production, and this is within a concentrated area between the two ditches. Portions of the subject property are designated as agricultural lands of local, statewide, and national importance. The proposal preserves approximately 85% of the parcel and effectively clusters improvements in a central location. The applicant proposes to lease out the 20 acres of preserved land north and south of the ditches for pasture or crop production, and another approximately 3.5 acres is proposed to be used for growing farm-to-table produce for use by caterers and other vendors at events. The application materials also indicate that the two Supply Ditch water shares will not be used to support the reception hall use, but will instead be used only for agricultural production. To ensure the applicant's commitment of record to utilize their water shares for agricultural purposes only, staff recommends a condition of approval requiring that the shares remain attached to the property and available for agricultural production. With the recommended conditions, staff finds the proposal will be compatible with the comprehensive plan. Here's the proposed site plan showing the access off of Highway 287. The reception hall is in the middle with two detention ponds on the north side of the development, and the chapel and outdoor ceremony space along the western sides, and the four cabins are at the southern edge. There are also three berms proposed along the north and east boundaries. The original site plan included a recreational pond, which has been removed, and the revised site plan also much more effectively clusters the development, including parking and structures, leaving more of the site undisturbed. Here's the grading plan. A total of 13,275 cubic yards of earthwork is proposed, including the three five-foot berms on the north and east sides for noise mitigation, but staff finds that the berms are an unnecessary alteration of existing topography and in conflict with criterion number four, and so we're recommending that the applicant replace the proposed berms with tree screening as a condition of approval. So here's the landscaping plan, and as a commitment of record with the recommended and with the recommended condition, the owner's two water shares in the Supply Ditch will only be used to irrigate for agricultural purposes, and all other water needs are proposed to be met through a water tap with Little Thompson Water District, including for landscaping. Here are the proposed elevations, colors, and materials for the reception hall. It is proposed at a maximum height of 30 feet from existing grade, but it is located approximately 790 feet from Highway 287. Also, the existing topography and vegetative screening provides some amount of visual buffering from the north and the south, and there are also similarly sized structures in the surrounding area. And here are the elevations for the chapel. The applicant proposes using 35% reduced light transmittance glazing for both the reception hall and the chapel on the west elevations, which are made up almost entirely of windows, so that will reduce a lot of the trespass of light from the interior to the exterior. Also, to ensure that the use does not cause undue visual impacts, staff recommends requiring color samples and exterior lighting plans at permit application, and including requiring a plan for any proposed access drive, parking lot, or landscape lighting on the site so that nighttime visual impacts are minimized. These are the elevations for the four 900-square-foot cabins that are proposed, which cannot be permitted because they constitute a resort lodge, conference center, or guest ranch use, and so staff recommends a condition of approval to remove the cabins from the proposal to avoid having two principal uses on the property that increase density. So a few site photos. This one is looking west at the access drive and the access drive circle that's right in front of the reception hall, and so the reception hall is straight ahead in this picture. And here we are looking west at the chapel from the parking lot. And then looking north from the chapel at the closest neighbors. This is the area where a berm with tree screening is proposed along the northern boundary, but as previously stated, staff recommends removing the berm. Then here we're looking south at the chapel with the outdoor ceremony space and the reception hall beyond. Looking north at the outdoor ceremony area and the south elevation of the reception hall. And looking east at the ceremony area and reception hall beyond. And again, east at the cabin area south of the access drive. We also did a height poll study for this application. The height poll is the red line in the middle of the picture, and it's set at 30 feet in the middle of the east elevation or the front of the reception hall, and the location is set back approximately 790 feet from Highway 287. And here we're looking at that same height pole at the same height and same position from Yellowstone Road, and you can see a large agricultural structure in the background that's on the neighboring property to the north. And here again, that same height pole from a little farther north on Highway 287, and you can see another larger agricultural structure in the background that is located on the property adjacent to the west. So this application was referred out to the typical agencies and departments. Some responses of note came from the Colorado Department of Transportation. They responded that the applicant has worked with them to address concerns. Our engineering team stated that legal access has been demonstrated, and they also agreed with the findings of the transportation system impact study, that the traffic generated by the project can be safely accommodated. They also responded that access and parking lots must be designed to the multimodal transportation standards, and the detention ponds must comply with the storm drainage criteria manual. They also need permissions from the Highland Ditch Company and the Supply Ditch Company that confirm their approvals of the final design for those detention ponds, copies of the 60-foot ditch easements, and a copy of the CDOT access permit to be submitted at building permit application. Parks and Open Space Department initially responded with significant concerns, and in an updated referral response, a condition of approval was requested to tie the property owner's water shares in the Supply Ditch to the land to ensure the applicant's commitment of record to utilize that water for ag only. This application was sent to 24 adjacent property owners, and staff received 10 comments. One noted no concerns, and the rest voiced concerns regarding traffic, noise, lighting, drainage, privacy, safety, and security, decreased property values, environmental impact, incompatibility, use of the overnight cabins, agricultural impact, and visual impact. By far, traffic and noise were the two main categories of concerns. Some special use criteria of note. Criterion number two, that the use will be compatible with the surrounding area. Staff finds that the proposed use is compatible with the surrounding area since it is easily accessible, and the necessary infrastructure and services exist in the immediate area, and it is also in close proximity to a major population center. The proposed site layout is compatible with the land since the disturbance is concentrated in a small area, and the arrangement innovatively marries agricultural uses with the reception hall use in a way that staff finds in harmony with the surrounding area. Criterion number seven, this use will support a multimodal transportation system and not result in significant negative impacts. Based on the traffic study, approximately 2.5 occupants are anticipated per vehicle for this use, and 111 vehicle parking spaces are found to be adequate to accommodate the necessary parking in combination with the proposed use of shuttle services. The applicant will require shuttle services for events with over 200 guests, and will also encourage shuttle service for all other events, and this service has an added benefit of reducing the number of vehicles coming and going and further reducing traffic risks. So to enforce this agreement, staff recommends two conditions of approval. One, that no overflow parking be permitted for this development proposal, and that no more than 111 vehicles be parked on-site at any time, and that shuttle service be required for all events where 200 or more persons, including vendors and staff, will be on-site. Criterion eight, will not cause significant air, odor, water, or noise pollution. The proposed operational standards for the reception hall include a strict 10:00 PM cutoff time for all events, and there are some enforcement measures that they're going to implement. The only outdoor amplified sound to be used will be for the outdoor ceremonies at the very beginning of an event. They did propose berms to further reduce noise trespass. However, the berms are found to be an over-intensive use of the land, and so to mitigate noise produced by the proposed use or to help mitigate, staff recommends a condition of approval for additional tree screening in the same locations as those proposed berms. The screening will also help to visually buffer the proposed development. And so with that, Community Planning and Permitting staff recommends that the Planning Commission recommend conditional approval for docket SU-200003 Jubilee Acres Reception Hall, subject to the conditions outlined in the staff recommendation.
Okay, thank you, Rainey. Any questions from other commissioners?
This is Commissioner Gargano. I just had a question about 111 spaces feels like a lot, I guess. So I'm just wondering how we came to that number, especially considering the shuttle requirements and how close it is to town.
So the 111 spaces that are proposed on the plan, and that came from the applicant and from their traffic study that they submitted, and so the traffic study indicated that 111 spaces would be enough for the proposed use, and we do have Jennifer Severson here from the engineering team who might be able to speak to that further, and the applicants also might be able to help answer that question more thoroughly.
Yeah, and maybe the better question, and I can wait for the applicants too, is just, were there other amounts considered?
No, not with the traffic study and then the shuttle service that they have committed to.
Thank you.
Rainey, do you mind if I jump in and help to answer that question as well?
I think that you could if the commissioner... But you also have a chance to present as well.
Okay, great. Thank you so much.
Yeah, we'll just have you answer when you come up.
Great, thank you so much.
Any other questions from commissioners at this time? We'll have more chance for discussion questions later on. I have one clarification, Rainey. This is Commissioner Sam Libby. On the change in the conditions to basically replace the berms of vegetation, one of the plans that you showed showed, I think, trees already along the northern berm, and so in that case, it would just be removing the berm and dropping the trees by five feet effectively. And then to the east, is it additional trees or the trees that are already there?
Yes, so the condition of approval basically states that the trees proposed on the north are staying, and that I think like three additional trees will be put on the northeastern berm on the north side of the driveway, and then more tree screening on the southeast berm. So we can, I have those conditions in the PowerPoint if you want to look at that condition specifically.
No, that's fine. Thank you. Okay, hearing no further questions, we can move on to presentation from the applicant. I think we have Courtney and Robert to present. If you guys can both state your names and addresses before you present, and then we'll take your presentation and ask questions afterwards. I think somebody else as well, but anybody from the applicant side who wants to present, you can state your name and address and participate. Thank you.
So we need Courtney to share the screen for...
Oh yeah, I'll do that. Are we stating our names and addresses first?
If you could all do that first, that'd be great, for the record.
Okay, very good. My name is Robert Malloy. My address is 980 Norway Maple Drive in Loveland, and I'm the landscaper or the application.
My name is Courtney Walter. I'm the property owner for Jubilee Acres, and my current address is 107 Dawson Lane Enterprise, Alabama, 36330.
My name is Darcy Sheehan, and I reside at 830 Park Edge Circle in Windsor, and I am the wedding planner for the venue.
Thank you. Carry on, please.
Okay, so as I said, my name's Robert Malloy. I'm a licensed landscape architect who works throughout northern Colorado, actually throughout Colorado, but I do a lot of work in northern Colorado. First of all, I'd like to thank Rainey for her presentation. She's been very wonderful to work with, finding solutions to meet and exceed county guidelines for the S U O S R use within this ag zone. We fully understand the importance of the process we went through to get the project before Planning Commission, myself, the owner, and the wedding professional planner are going to present this project in three parts. We're going to start with site development, and we move to logistical operations, and then into impact analysis. We will be repeating some of what Rainey had presented, and I apologize for that, but that's just part of our presentation. So I'm going to start with the next slide. So I'm going to start with the site development. The location is always vital to the success of a business. The owner's found this location, and my site analysis found it's a site to be exceptionally good fit for what the owner is proposing. It's centrally located between two communities, just over three miles in either direction. The property has some great view corridors towards the mountains and existing 60-year-old-plus trees that frame these views. The topography is relatively flat, and aside from the required detention ponds, there'll be limited amount of grading needed for the site. There is a limited number of residents within the area who live, whose living areas are substantially separated from the site, which gives it a true country setting and has a strong appeal for wedding events. Next slide. There are two irrigation ditches that frame the site and offer a natural screen to the event center. With overgrown vegetation that run along both sides of the ditches, the lot is deep enough and able to push the building back from the highway to reduce the noise and visual disparities. After working with the county, I recognized project, I reorganized the project in a minimalist manner to reduce the disturbance, disturb areas, and maintain most of the property as agriculture. The entire property covers just over 36 acres. We understand that the county would like to see this property continue with the majority of the property being maintained as an existing agricultural use. As you can see, we have followed with the recommendation from the county and removed the cabins as one of the conditions. So this has reduced the footprint from our project from what was written in our narrative. The footprint of our project now covers 4.24 acres, which is under 12% of the total property. And next slide. This includes 5,125-square-foot reception hall, which will be used for indoor ceremonies and celebrations, and will offer a space for church services until the chapel is built. The chapel will be 2,760 square feet in size, and will offer additional options for indoor ceremonies and church services. The remaining property will be used for agricultural production with 21.6 acres that will be utilized for pasture and crops, and the owner is also reserving an area of up to 3.54 acres to be used for farm-to-table produce to be associated with the event needs. The irrigation ditch covers the remaining 2.5 acres of the property. Next slide. The overview of the property is broken into hatch areas, as you can see in this drawing. One of the hatch area shows agricultural area, and the other hatch area will be taken out of agricultural production. And from this drawing, this is a drawing that the cabins aren't shown, so it's an updated drawing from what was presented. So we added some 3D drawings to offer a better perspective of how this project fits on the site. This first image is as if you were standing on the edge of the road looking in. You can barely make out the mountains in the background. Maybe you can't see them on near screen. It's due to the smoke. These are recent pictures. Unfortunately, it was a smoky day, but there's, everything lines up directly with long speak. The next images represent the project and how it fits on the site from an aerial view. And then the last slide I'm presenting is finally, the two images represent the backside, and then the third image in the bottom right corner represents a view from the inside of the reception hall.
Good afternoon, Commissioners. My name is Darcy Sheehan, as previously stated. I was born in Boulder, Colorado, and I attended Colorado State University where I obtained a bachelor's in hospitality management. I have been working as a wedding industry professional in and around Boulder County for the past seven years, and I will be responsible for all wedding operations at the Jubilee Acres Reception Hall. The following graphs that were polled, they were polled from the 2019 wedding report. These graphs accurately depict the total market sales, wedding seasonality, and average guest counts for Boulder County specifically. 2020 was obviously a difficult year for the industry due to the pandemic, so in an effort to provide more normalized data, we felt that the data from 2019 would be a more accurate reflection of the industry performance in the area. So in 2019, there were 2,578 weddings with an average spend of 31,992, making the Boulder County wedding market over 82 million in total sales, with an increase and upward trend predicted in years 2022, 23, and 24. Wedding seasonality, if you want to skip to the next, yeah. Wedding seasonality is May through October, with the most popular months being June through September. The average number of guests in the US, next slide, oh awesome. The average number of guests in the US... The next, the average number of guests in the U S is one twenty five. However, the average number is actually greater in Boulder County with a average of one seventy six to one eighty six. So we wanted to give you an idea of what a typical wedding timeline would look like. We did build this timeline around what is currently a very popular ceremony start time of four P M. Guests tend to arrive fifteen to thirty minutes prior to ceremony start time and ceremonies last typically thirty minutes. We will be offering an indoor and outdoor option for those ceremonies, which will be dependent upon both client preference and weather conditions. Our receptions will be conducted indoors with music and dancing taking place between seven and ten P M. And once all formalities are done, so cake cutting, first dance, things like that. Guests will naturally begin trickling out. There will be two venue representatives onsite at all times during events and they will be in constant communication with DJs and or bands. Giving them a ten minute and last song reminder to ensure that ten P M cutoff for music. A few key takeaways that we do think are very important. All receptions will take place indoors. There will never be two events taking place at the same time. A church service will never occur at the same time as a wedding. All events over two hundred will require shuttles. And non wedding events are anticipated primarily in off peak season. It is also anticipated that these events will include events for local businesses, nonprofits and schools.
My name is Courtney Walter. Commissioners, good afternoon. I, my current address is one oh seven Dawson Lane Enterprise Alabama three six three three zero. I am the property owner and applicant for Jubilee Acres reception hall use for special review. I grew up in rural Elizabeth, Colorado, on a small hobby farm and relocated to Northern Colorado when I attended college at Colorado State University. I met my husband around that time, who is an officer in the Colorado National Guard Medevac Unit. His career has taken us through a few deployments. And has landed us here in Fort Rucker, Alabama, for only eighteen months for his formal flight training as a Black Hawk pilot. We have been itching to get back to Colorado, our home state, and are currently under contract on a house to be completed. In February of twenty twenty one, it'll be just twenty minutes away from the property. As far as my career goes, after college, I worked in corporate human resources for four years. And then decided to stay home with my kids who are one and three years old. Ever since the very beginning, we have been very committed to gaining a thorough understanding of our impact and to working in cooperation with the county and the community. As you know, understanding our impact requires us to gather information from several different sources. We've considered everything from site characteristics to comments that we received at our neighborhood meeting to comments and questions from planning staff. And reports provided by independent professional engineers. There are many qualities that are attractive about this land, as Rob mentioned. But some of the main reasons we believe this to be a perfect location for a reception hall are the size of the property. There are non impeded views of Long's Peak that are framed out by cottonwood trees. There's quite a bit of overgrown vegetation along the ditches. That provide a certain degree of seclusion from neighboring properties. We have the ability to set the building back over seven hundred and fifty feet away from Highway two eighty seven. There are a limited number of residential properties that actually surround the site. We were able to request direct access off a major highway minimizing our local traffic impact. And we are centrally located between Berthold and Longmont as well as a short forty five minute drive from Denver. Even before we submitted our pre-application methodology statement to county transportation. We specifically budgeted for a full traffic impact study. This is an area where we would like to understand our impact as much as possible and help minimize any concerns. Not only that, the safety of our public, the they are the public, our neighbors, our clients and their guests. Are essential to the success of our business. We do not want any ongoing traffic issues as a result of this project. This independent engineer's findings are summarized in the formal traffic study included in our submittal. But a couple of things to note are that a majority of the event peak traffic will occur during off peak traffic hours. C dot has looked at our report and and concurred that the concerns with traffic or accident safety on U S two eighty seven. There, there are no concerns with accident safety on U S two eighty seven as a, as a result of this development project. And full movement access to U S two eighty seven can be provided for this project from existing roadway improvements. It became apparent early on in the application process that despite the significant distance from our neighbors. That the sound generated by the reception hall raised question from our surrounding communities and staff. This is another area where we do not want to have any ongoing noise issues. And feel that that would be harmful to our business if we did. And so we wanted to have a better understanding. Of what our noise impact would be. And for that reason, we hired a professional sound engineer to conduct an acoustical evaluation for our project. And also to provide recommendations for noise mitigation. These recommendations were put into two categories. Building and landscaping improvements as well as administrative techniques. You can see a full list of our intentions in the development narrative and several of them are listed on this slide. But some very specific additions worth mentioning is that that we have implemented based on his recommendations is adding a vestibule to the north entrance and purchasing. And we will be purchasing noise measurement and limiting equipment for outdoor ceremonies. The findings of the acoustical evaluation analysis are summarized in this slide. I want to stress that learning this information was very important to us. And I hope that hiring this professional engineer demonstrates how committed we are to not having any ongoing noise issues as a result of this project. The engineer found that the noise inside of the reception hall could reach up to ninety eight decibels. Without violating Boulder County's nighttime ordinance standards. And that is fifty decibels measured ten feet from the property line. A decibel level of ninety eight is quite high and widely considered unsafe for long term hearing. So this engineer used a number, a more reasonable number of ninety decibels inside the reception hall to calculate the decibel levels at some of our neighbors' homes. For example, the closest residence residents to our north measures at thirty five decibels. Which is equivalent to the sound of a computer or a babbling brook. And the neighbors off of Bermuda Drive to the north of us measure at twenty eight decibels. Which is similar to a soft whisper, just to help put that into perspective. The engineer also noted that other noises, particularly traffic noise and high wind noise. Could contribute to masking the noise generated by these events. Here is a quick snapshot of a few of our neighbors and their distances from our building. The home that is six hundred and thirty feet away is the closest to us. They are the neighbor directly north to us, as I mentioned in the last slide. Measured at thirty five decibels or babbling brook. They're the lower circle on there. And the structures at one thousand eight hundred and thirty two feet and one thousand nine hundred and fifty two feet, which is the circle toward the top of your screen. Are the northern neighbors neighbors off Bermuda Drive that we also mentioned, which were measured at twenty eight decibels or soft whisper. Preserving here, preserving the view of the two eighty seven corridor, particularly facing west. Towards the mountains has also been a high priority of ours since the beginning. For this reason, we chose to stick to a very low building profile, only thirty feet. We want it, we set it a significant distance back from the highway. As well as we chose a style of architecture that is both beautiful and matches our agricultural surroundings. We've also incorporated quite a few shade and coniferous trees and will be adding more as staff recommends. To break up the view of our building to the east and north borders of the property. We submitted an extensive ecological study for this project with our original application. And the findings stated that there would be little environmental impact as a result of this project. We also are committed to pursuing geothermal energy in place of a heating and cooling system for the buildings. We plan to incorporate a sustainable farm to table operation as an integral part of our business during peak wedding season. And in the second round submittal, we proposed a reduction in parking. Based on what was written in the code in exchange for our clients to shuttle in their guests, which not only reduces our footprint on the land, but also our traffic impact. Another, another sort of unexpected concern that arose during our informal neighborhood meeting. Came from our neighbor that touches our northwest corner of the property. They happen to own camels. They were concerned about the public, potential for public access to the property. In response to this concern, we reorganized the site plan and moved it further away from the north property line. We also added a six foot privacy fence and a tight row of coniferous trees. And separated our parking lot and these improvements with several acres of crop production. We agree that many of the conditions proposed by the county would, we agree with almost all of the conditions proposed by the county. And honestly, would be thrilled with the, with an approval with the conditions as is. We are very grateful for the planning department's hard work throughout this process and their clear commitment to protecting Boulder County's, Boulder County's beautiful lands and views. We do have a few follow up questions for the commission and the planning department on two of the conditions for approval. After we purchased the property, we found that the supply ditch shares could only be used on areas of the property. With suitable type typography at or below ditch elevation. Unfortunately, this only leaves a portion of the property where the water can be utilized. We believe we can support this area with only one of the ditch shares and are ready to attach the share to the property. We don't intend to use either share for any other reason than for agricultural purposes and we're willing to commit to that as well. Our concern would be that if we were not using both ditch shares effectively and efficiently. That one of them could be used by another farmer along the ditch for their own agricultural production needs, we wouldn't be able to transfer it. And then also the proposed berms were largely intended as noise and view barrier on the north and east borders of the property. But they also served another purpose. And that is to keep as much as the of the existing soil with the land as possible. We believe that it would be helpful if the property were ever to returned to its original state to have the soil readily available to backfill the detention ponds onsite. Thank you so much for considering our proposal. We look very much forward to answering any questions that you might have and engaging with the public on this project. Thank you.
This is Commissioner Sam Libby. Thank you for the presentation. Are there any questions from other commissioners for the applicant at this time?
I have a question. This is Commissioner Hilton. Do we know the occupancy for the chapel?
I believe I can answer that. So we have not gone through the full occupancy process quite yet. Our architect is working on occupancy for a response to Little Thompson to get our information to them for water usage. And so we don't have that information quite yet. I'm so sorry about that.
Thank you.
Yeah.
This is Commissioner, you know, even just like a rough guesstimate for the indoor one?
I can answer that. It's very similar to the outdoor seating area. So we're probably looking at upward of one hundred and fifty people. Does that sound about right, Courtney?
Yes, I, I believe the way that he calculates occupancy is there's different calculations based on how the floor space will be used. So I believe the same, it, from what I understand, the same amount of people. That will be allowed inside of the reception hall will probably be allowed inside of the chapel because it's a different use of of floor space. Just based on my like very brief understanding of his, his calculations.
This is Commissioner McMillan. With the four lodges lodging areas cabins being removed. From the site plan, is the parking area that's shown immediately adjacent to them proposed to remain or will that? Will that go away with with the cabins as well?
It's proposed to remain according to the planning department's conditions of approval. They, they would like the one hundred and eleven spots to remain.
We have one hundred and eleven spots and those were included in the count, so we're remaining one hundred and eleven spots.
Okay, thank you.
Any additional questions? Okay, thanks again for your presentation. We're going to move into public testimony. I'm going to read a couple of comments and guidelines around that before we get into the list of people we have signed up and have asked to speak. All members of the public will have a chance to speak if they wish, even if you didn't sign up from the planning commission homepage before the meeting. Once those that have signed up in advance have spoken, I'll call for additional members of the public to speak or if you signed up in the chat during this meeting. If you joined by computer to the Zoom meeting, you can sign up by submitting your first name, last name, address and the docket number in the chat box if you haven't already. As each person who is joined by computer and sent up to speak is unmuted. Zoom will adjust your participant status so that you can speak and be seen via video if you wish. Once you're finished speaking, Zoom will place you back into the room as an attendee. If you're dialed in by phone and wish to speak, you can raise your hand by pressing star nine on your phone. And then we will unmute you when it's, when we call on you to provide comment. When it's your turn, the system will request that you unmute yourself with star six. Once you've done that, either by computer or by phone, again, for everyone who's speaking, please state your name and address for the record before you provide your comments. Each speaker will be provide, will be provided with three minutes to speak and a timer will beep at the end of the three minute time through the Zoom audio. Just like that. Very loud today. So in terms of pool time, there is an option for members who wish to pull their time together at three minutes per person for a maximum of ten minutes. You'll have to provide the names, addresses of other people who are pulling with you up to three others. And you'll all have to be present and in attendance in the meeting to pull for that period of time. Anybody who is pulling time will need to be in attendance. We can verify their presence here in the meeting as well. So we'll ask them to speak up if they're present. As a reminder, please do not submit any comments or questions in the chat box. This is only for signup. Please remain unmute when possible. We'll have to mute people if we have background noise coming through. And then members of the public when speaking will be unable to share their screens. So sorry about that. And then thank you to the applicant for already presenting. And so we'll go ahead and open the public hearing at this time. This is a public hearing for docket SU dash twenty dash zero 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 three, the Jubilee Acres Reception Hall. And we'll now move into the list of people who have already signed up for the meeting. And the first speaker will be Mary Gary Pearson. Mary, are you here? Make sure you unmute yourself, Mary. I can see you're in the meeting.
How about this? Are we good now?
I think so. Mary, can you state your name and address for us?
This is Gary Pearson.
Oh, Gary, okay.
One zero four nine six Bermuda Drive.
Thank you.
Eight zero five zero four.
Go ahead.
So we really appreciate the chance to give some feedback. It's a very elegant presentation and it sounds like they have done their best to answer some of the concerns and questions that we have. We moved to the area about four and a half years ago. I'm a family physician. We plan on this being our retirement home. It's a very quiet area, very agricultural, very scenic and quite beautiful. And we were somewhat shocked that someone wanted to put up. Venue that would have some significant impact on the surrounding area. The, the major concerns we had, the first was really safety. In the last four years, the traffic on two eighty seven has been significant and continues to be rather disturbing. Sometimes it can take up to four or five minutes to go south on to two eighty seven. I leave for work at five forty five in the morning and I have, I go north on two eighty seven and have to wait for traffic. So I think they were optimistic and somewhat ill advised regarding how much traffic there would be. With a hundred cars coming out of that traffic, I ran out of that parking lot, that is going to be a significant problem. We have seen numerous accidents along the way. Cars are going seventy five, eighty miles an hour. And so that's one of my big concerns as an emergency room physician is traffic. The other one is going to be noise. I really appreciated they did a noise study. I think that was, that was nice. But as you all know, we have three daughters that have gotten married in Colorado. But as you all know, we have three daughters that have gotten married in Colorado in venues outside. And you, when the weather is nice, you cannot keep people indoors in Colorado. So I like the fact that they're not going to have amplified music outside. I think that's wonderful, but sound carries very easily in this area. There are not that many trees. And so that is one of our big concerns. We go to bed, I get to bed on my work nights at nine o'clock. So that's one of our other concerns. And so let my wife speak to a few more things.
I would like to say thank you again for the efforts in mitigating some of our, our community concerns. I am thrilled to hear that the cabins are going to be not permitted. That is, that was a significant factor in our agitation and anticipation of future conflict with unsupervised. Public use of, of our, our pristine and pastoral area, which we have a conservation easement and have taken that on as. A project that we would like to continue with out the disturbance of irregular and unsupervised people. So we're pleased to hear that. But traffic and noise still remain highly problematic for our, our purview. There's indication that there won't be amplification outside, but I do not see how you can have up to 300 people at an outside venue and not have amplification. And that the beginning of the events are going to be at four o'clock. So the amplification would end, but yet we know that throughout the year, the sun set and the, that not every event will begin at four o'clock. And that the noise will end it at that time. I also want to point out that the change from a berm of soil to trees will really not. I just can't imagine that that's going to suffice as, as an adequate barrier. I don't think the berm up to five feet was going to be adequate. And I do not think trees will be an effective barrier either. We have neighbors that are much further away than this proposed venue. And when they have something that is like a barbecue outside and, and not amplified, I mean, not largely amplified music is extremely audible. And we can, we can hear it for the duration of the event and that is only very intermittent. So this would be regular. And also in the application on page 105, there's some errors saying that there will be three events a week adding up to 81. So I think that there's an extreme underestimation to the amount of, of a disturbance that we would have to as residents contend with. Given that the owners and planners are not residents and will not be there. So we're not looking forward to a long-term tentative relationship with this, this proposed venue. The sound study saying that 30, that the decibel level would be to us a soft whisper is highly unbelievable. We, my next concern is the traffic, which my husband already addressed. I have an extreme concern with the application that on page 106, it says that a traffic study was not evaluated as part of this analysis. And I want to know why a traffic, an accident study was not, I'm sorry, I said traffic study, but an accident study. Where we have lived there for only under five years and have witnessed several fatalities in that stretch and numerous other accidents. And one of them causing damage on our own property. And I myself have had several near misses that have been life threatening in that turn lane. So I know that it is dangerous. It is, it is of high consequence. And we know that these studies have been done, but we live there and we know that this will have a significant impact on our lifestyle. We also, I am pleased to find that there's an intention for a farm to table operation, but alas, it's not primary. And the owner said that she evaluated it to be an integral part of the, of the venue. I don't believe that. But if that were the case and that were part of the application, then we would be much more pleased. It remains to be seen if that will materialize. We also have concerns about the water shares and. Very much.
So next we have Steve Strawbridge. And Steve, I believe that you'll need to press star six to unmute yourself.
Hello, can you hear me?
Yes, we can.
Great. So my name is Steve Strawbridge. I reside at 10504 Bermuda Drive, which is another property to the north of this proposed development. I submitted a written position on my concerns about this proposal. And it primarily focused again on the traffic. And so I don't know if I need to reiterate. The concerns that the Piercens have just mentioned regarding the traffic. Although the, the point that I think maybe needs to be emphasized. Is that this is a changing and dynamic situation on this highway. Where significant development of multiple suburban tracks just to the north of this property in Berthoud and South Loveland. Are significantly increasing the amount of traffic over time. So we've been on this property for about 15 years. And the exponential increase in traffic over those 15 years. I just don't quite know how this is going to be sustainable with the traffic on this road for, you know, five years from now. And, and you know, I'm not sure how to adequately. Express my concern about the dangers of merging onto this highway with. Changing weather conditions, changing lighting conditions. And it's just, it's something that I think the proposal owners should really strongly consider. Because I think it is going to have a lot of impact on the people who attend this venue and work at this venue. If there are accidents that I anticipate will happen as a result of this development. So I'll, I'm finished with my public statements. Thank you for giving us the opportunity.
Thank you. And next we have Nicole and Joseph Henderson. And I believe Mr. Henderson will be speaking. Nicole, I believe you've joined and are able to unmute yourself whenever you're ready for Mr. Henderson to speak.
Okay, can you hear us now?
We can.
Yes, we can. Thanks. I'm back in. I thank you. And you're pulling time, the two of you, I think. So you have six minutes.
Yeah, so Joseph will do the speaking.
Okay, if you do your names and addresses, go for it. Thank you.
Nicole Bell Henderson, 15493 North 107th Street, Longmont, Colorado, 80504.
And Joseph Henderson, same address, 15493 North 107th Street. We appreciate the opportunity and. Just would hope that the commissioners are aware of this area. Actually have driven this stretch of, of highway. Because I think that's the only true way to get a sense of the traffic and so forth. Anyhow, I used to farm the two acres. At Jubilee Acres and after hearing about the scope of the event center, no longer. Participate in agricultural endeavors there. And it just feels to me like the county has invested as well as neighbors have invested in conservation easements. This property is practically surrounded by conservation easements directly to the east. Directly to the west and to the north. And it's kind of. Feels a little like a slap in the face to have people that live here. Invest their, their hearts and souls in this neighborhood and this community and, and the county to invest in conservation easements. To all of a sudden turn around and open it up for business. The land has not had any agriculture activities outside of the very small two acres for many years. While there is other businesses along this stretch of Highway 287. Their parking lots hold 25 to 30 cars. A profound difference between the 110 car parking lot that is proposed. And probably the most significant thing to me is that. The other two businesses are small and the people live there. It's their, it's their residence. It's not just a business along a highway. These people live there. They, they deal with the road every day. They're invested every day in this community. And it feels to me like this event center is more a business. It's a, it's a business proposal. It's not a, as you heard, they're building a, a home somewhere else. If agriculture is a part of it, why hasn't there been any improvement or farming taking place? If farm to table is the goal, then why not start with a farm? Again, this appears to be strictly a business wedding adventure. At the expense of people who live here and have purchased large tracts of land to keep it royal. I mean, it's beautiful because people decided, I'm going to buy land here. I'm going to farm here. I'm going to invest in this neighborhood and it, in this area. This does not seem like it's anywhere close to that. We're not talking about a residence here. We're talking about a business proposal. At the expense of those that live around it. As far as the agriculture with two shares that they state that they have. That gives only 28 inches of water per share is what supply issued last year. Seems like, is there even enough water to do a, to do a farm to table gig? Again, I, I just emphasize that. I thought that this was an agricultural residential community and neighborhood. And, and this appears like, as you can see, every step, this is a business adventure. This is a business adventure for somebody who wants to come in at everybody else's expense within our neighborhood. And yeah, the sound, again, what Mary and Gary were speaking of, we do have. Neighbors that will have gatherings occasionally and the sound does travel. And I really suspect the. The decimals and, and, and all, all that that was, that was mentioned, sound travels. It's, it's easy. You know.
With having the schedule, we'll never have any peace.
Yeah, I mean, it's, it's. I don't know how to say it. I wish the commissioners could come out and actually see the place and understand. The depths of, this is a far contrast to what exists here, you know? It's, it's a far contrast to what exists here. And it's really disheartening to think that a neighborhood and a community. Could now just be subjected to somebody's business adventure. And. I would encourage the commissioners to come out and actually. For themselves firsthand what's taking place.
Thank you. The time has expired. Thank you for your comments. Okay, next on the list from the public is Karina Fisher. Karina, are you here? Karina, are you able to unmute yourself and speak?
There we go. Okay.
Yep.
I'm a farmer, not a tech person. Um, so.
Can you state your address, please? Thank you.
Oh, yes. 10429 Yellowstone Road, Longmont, Colorado, 80504. I'm Karina Fisher. Thank you very much for giving me the opportunity to speak. So I'll get right to it. So the little section they're talking about and the irrigation, since we were just talking about that, I'll start there. Between those two ditches, that's the best farmland on the entire property. It's one of the only areas that can be. Irrigated and farmed because of the historical irrigation policies that they were talking about. So we're really taking away the prime farmland from that property. It's the best part. Also, the, you know, I love the idea of having a little farm to table deal going on. You know, three and a half acre plot, that's about, oh, five to 10 employees, full-time employees for, for the season for just the farm. And we have so many small farmers that would love to sell more produce. So that to me seems like a conflict. We already have a beautiful community of farmers in Boulder County that need the business, that are struggling, that are barely making ends meet. So I would hate to see that take away from our existing community. Let's see, so property values obviously greatly affected. I would be absolutely remiss not to mention our neighbor to the north. They mentioned his property several times, but not the fact that he passed away three weeks ago. And when I saw him three weeks before that, he was very, very, very concerned about this project. Effect that it would have on his property because he needed to sell it. It was a major source of stress for him. Now his children will need the proceeds from that sale to carry them through their life where their father cannot. So the property value situation, I can't, yeah. So let's see. Also the traffic, nobody mentioned alcohol. You know, this is a wedding. People are pretty historically throughout time, very irresponsible at weddings. Lots of alcohol consumption. I really like the idea of having a shuttle. That's not going to be enough. And then to the sound, in that little diagram that they showed, I'm actually the farthest away. But the way that the topography is, it creates a, an amphitheater straight to my home. So if say. The Hendersons have loud music, I hear it like it is next door to me. And indeed, people all the way to the north of me, I don't even know where it was coming from, had to be at least a mile north of me. Over the two ditches with super dense vegetation. I can't even see over there. And I could hear it like it was in my backyard. And again, 300 people getting out of an event at night, they're not going to be quiet. They're coming out of a wedding. They're happy. They want, I mean. I, you know, I have no criticism of people leaving a wedding and feeling exuberant and wanting to, you know, continue to express their love and enjoyment for the moment. But I'm a farmer. And I sleep with my windows open all summer. It's a big part of my quality of life. And if I'm awoken every night when they let this stuff out, that is also going to affect my quality of life. And very much your time. I appreciate it.
Thank you. Next on the list is Susan Strawbridge.
Hi, can you hear me?
We can. Yes, thank you, Susan.
Hi, I'm Steve's wife and so I live at 10504 Bermuda. And I, we built this house 15 years ago. And I went, I was kind of the contractor and I went through so much grief from Boulder County. Every little thing we did to build this house was almost put down and it's, it's. And so I'm just really shocked that you're letting this happen. Because when we built a kind of normal house, it was incredibly hard to get anything past through Boulder County, through Boulder County. So that is a, like Joseph said, a slap in the face. It's, it's unbelievable that this is going to happen. And I, and I agree with Joseph. It's like, I don't think if you drive this road, you really know what's going on. And actually Saturday afternoon are some of the highest. And actually Saturday afternoon are some of the highest traffic times on that road. It's, I mean, I had to dodge a full-on inner tube, rubber inner tube and pull it off the road just this past summer. That's one of the things because people were veering into the center lane, veering into oncoming traffic. It's, I mean, that's just one situation. So, um, the other piece that I worry about is when you have people trying to cross traffic from the south, yeah, into there, um, you're going to have a queue probably of maybe eleven cars at a time, probably more if everybody's coming at three o'clock. You do not know what that does to traffic going both ways. Everybody gets freaked out. They're like, what's going on? Is there an accident? There's traffic? It's, anyway, it's awful. And so I would hope that you guys would come out Saturday, Sunday and drive this road. And you will know what I'm talking about. It's becoming a death trap. And, um, also another thing that I wanna, wanna say to, um, Courtney is that I really don't think you understand that the traffic noise that comes off of Highway 287 can be at some points in time like a racetrack. I mean, you are at NASCAR. It's bad. There's nothing relaxing about it. And we are sitting on the backside of our, our house. And we can still, and, and you know, it all depends, yes, on the wind, on whatever. So I do not agree with the noise thing whatsoever. And my last thing I want to say is that I think all of you are being naive to think that this is gonna work. Cause someone's gonna get drunk and someone's gonna get killed. We know the road because we drive it every single day. People who don't know the road and how busy it is and how the merge on the traffic are gonna not know what to do. So I just think you're being really naive here.
Thank you, Susan. Thank you, Susan, for your comment. Okay, moving on to our last pre-assigned person, Stephen Noel. Stephen, are you with us?
This is Anna Norderstaff. Stephen, I do see you here if you're able to unmute yourself.
I just did. Finally.
Go for it. Your name, your name, please. You have three minutes. Thank you.
My name is Stephen Noel. I'm a real estate broker with, uh, RE/MAX Alliance here in Longmont, Colorado. My address is two zero one three Coral Bells Court, Longmont, eight oh five oh three. Um, I sold the house to the Pearson's a few years back. And I stay in touch with them on a quarterly basis just to see how they're doing. And, uh, when I called Mary, uh, not too long ago, she had mentioned this project and told me all about it. And I was actually quite shocked when she told me that, uh, they would be having a hundred and fifty events. I just recently had two properties in Boulder County, uh, one on, uh, Ute Highway, one two six two one Ute Highway, which is on the corner of Ute Highway and County Line Road. Pretty similar the way it's set up. And, uh, they were instructed by Boulder County that they could have twelve events a year, one per month. So I was kind of blown away by the number of them. And obviously you have your reasons for it and whatnot. I, I don't question that other than, uh, that's quite a jump from twelve to a hundred and fifty or more. But really what we were talking about more than anything else was the property values. And it's been brought up here before, uh, by a few of the other people as to what would happen with the property values. Uh, Mary mentioned to me, uh, that the neighbor to the north that was just mentioned a few moments ago had passed away. And that they were going to be selling the property. And I said, wow, that's a shame because they are going to have to disclose that this event center is going to be built, uh, or is proposed to be built. And it will definitely impact the property value. Uh, I've been doing this for forty-three years. I am the number one RE/MAX agent, uh, in northern Colorado. Uh, and I am also, uh, the number one agent in this region for any company. So I've sold in the last, uh, uh, twenty years, I've sold over twenty-five hundred homes in the neighborhood and, and know the area very, very well. This will definitely affect the property values of each and every person around it. The first home that sells, and if it is that neighbor to the north who has to disclose this prior to it being done, this is the fear of the unknown to this buyer coming in. And I would estimate that you're talking a minimum of twenty percent, uh, hit in the value of this property because of the proposed, uh, uh, you know, project that is going up here. Additionally, any home that sells after that, that is in the surrounding area will be affected, number one, by the first home that sells that has to do that, that would be dropped in value. In addition to that, uh, the impact that this will have on everybody else, people who are purchasing properties like this, they want to be buying a rural property away from everybody else in the quiet of the area there. If they want a, a home that's noisy, come to my neighborhood. Okay. I live in Creekside and, and, uh, and Somerset Meadows and all of these other neighborhoods work real well. Thank you for your time.
Thank you, Stephen. All right. Are there anybody else? Are there any other people who've signed up by chat, Anna?
No, there are not.
Okay. And are there any other members of the public who have not already signed up who would like to speak on this docket?
And just a reminder, if you've joined via phone, you'll need to press star nine to raise your hand so that we know that you would like to speak to this item.
Okay, hearing none. Uh, before we close the hearing, I think we have opportunity for commissioners to ask additional questions to staff the applicant about this topic. Any questions?
Commissioner McMillan, I have a question for staff about the review process, process for, um, access to the the state highway. I do understand that it's Highway 287, which I assume access is regulated, um, by the state as opposed to the county. And I'm just wondering how that review process worked and if, I mean, this is a question for both the applicant and staff, but um, has access officially been granted? And were there any stipulations put on, on what that access needs to look like?
Rainey Ott, staff. I have not seen evidence of an access permit from CDOT. And you are correct, CDOT is, um, the agency that has purview over the road access. And CDOT also, um, responded to the referral with, um, no conflict because they said that the issues that they raised have been addressed by the applicant.
Thank you. Well, maybe a follow-up to that. How, how does the county confirm that access has been officially granted from CDOT?
One of the conditions of approval is that they must submit their access permit from CDOT with their building permit, the first one that they pull.
Okay, thank you. Maybe if we are asking questions of the applicant, if you have a, an update on the status of, of that process.
We were waiting until after this process was finished before we, uh, began to pursue that process. Uh, like Rainey said, they did, they, we addressed all the concerns that they originally had with the proposal and updated our traffic study to, um, to reflect even a worst-case scenario and CDOT found no concerns. Um, and as far as an accident analysis goes, like, they, um, they, there's a certain percentage of accidents that have to happen in order for them to require an accident study. So I think, um, as far as this will, will, uh, pending approval, we, our recommendation for approval, we will move forward with CDOT um, and defer to them on, uh, uh, traffic safety. I hope I answered your question.
You did. Thank you.
I can add to that if you'd like a little bit about our traffic engineer. Um, and someone I've worked with, uh, on both sides of the rail, he, uh, unfortunately can't be here because he's in, uh, Korea adopting, uh, a second child. Um, but he, we asked him to, uh, give us some of the comments. He, he wanted to present and we presented those. Uh, he was formerly, he worked for CDOT, uh, probably about fifteen to twenty years ago. So he's very in tune to, uh, how traffic studies, um, occur and, uh, the review process on the CDOT side. He also worked for the city of Loveland, uh, probably for about six to eight years as a reviewer, traffic, uh, study reviewer, um, for the city. So he's worked on that side. And then he's, um, started his own business about, uh, five years ago, um, doing, uh, preparing traffic studies. So he's very, very well qualified and very understanding of, uh, of, uh, the elements that, um, are involved. Of course, he stamps that, that, you know, his stamp and signature is on this traffic study. So he's liable for, for anything within. So we felt he was very qualified for, for this project and, uh, that's, you know, I, I work with a number of, uh, uh, well, three or four different traffic engineers and he's always been the best, um, to work with. Um, I also sit in a position that you sat in, sit in now for thirteen years as a planning commissioner. And now I'm a city council member for a city of Loveland anyway. So, um, just, uh, that aspect of dealing with, uh, land planning and such, um, the traffic is always the biggest concern. The traffic is a huge concern to the business as Courtney had said. Um, any accident can be detrimental to, uh, um, operation of her services. And that's why we're going to every extent to make sure that it's safe and going above and beyond, uh, even the requirements, um, to make sure that our guests, their, her guests are safe, um, in their travels.
Bluefield. Uh, hey, Sam, do we need to give, um, staff and, uh, applicant time to respond to public comments and whatnot?
Yeah, I'll include that after any questions.
Okay.
Did you have a question for anybody, Mark?
I did have a, a question for staff, actually. Uh, in terms of attaching the water shares to the land, um, can you give us a little detail about the intent behind that? I mean, I, I assume that the intent is that the water goes to agriculture. Um, but I'm just wondering if you could elaborate on that anymore.
Uh, I think that it would be more appropriate for Ron West, the natural resources planner, to answer that question. But staff is still in favor of tying both water shares, excuse me, to the property so that we can ensure that the shares are not separated from the property and that that water stays with the property for ag use.
Is Ron available for that comment?
Ron West is here. Space staff. Yeah, I think in a nutshell, Rainey just said it. The one thing I guess I would emphasize is that the impact, the loss, presumably permanent loss or at least long-term loss of agricultural production on about five acres is, is the issue. Um, that's, that's a given if this is approved. A loss of five acres of ag land is, uh, is a big loss comparatively speaking to all the dockets that I've reviewed over the years. Oftentimes it's a half acre or something like that. And that's usually for, um, residential uses. But, uh, a five acre loss is, is large. Um, the idea is that, in the worst-case scenario, from say, the applicant's perspective, that the farm-to-table agricultural operation does not work, does not survive. At least that water will always be there, um, for the future use of that area for agriculture. In, in, uh, in Colorado, you can separate the water from the land. You can sell the water off individually from the land. Say the operation is successful or unsuccessful. Um, anytime the owner can sell those shares, uh, to the market, to anyone. And then that would dry up, um, the, the entire area. In this case, from testimony, it sounds like it's, uh, only effectively for that area in between the two ditches. I don't know the details of that, but that's, um, that's the general idea.
Thank you. Um, can you give us an idea? I don't really have an idea of how much two shares like, is that a lot for the size of property? Is it not a lot?
I, uh, could not answer that myself. It sounds like from testimony, that's only enough to, at least from, from someone's perspective, it's only enough for those acreages between the two, uh, ditches. I know Courtney mentioned something about, um, it can only be used downhill, downstream from the ditch takeout. So that would limit also the area of use.
Got it. Um, and one, one final question, not to take too much time on this particular subject, but, I mean, is there an option of having it tied to the land, but if they're not going to use it, that they can lease it to someone else? So it just, so it doesn't just get, I don't know, I don't know if wasted is quite the right word, but.
I, I'm by no means a water law expert, but I believe they can lease it at any time. You know, leasing water doesn't separate it from the land if it's connected to it on deed.
Got it. So they could potentially have someone else use it, but it would still be tied to their land?
That's my understanding.
Thank you.
Thank you so much for that clarification, Ron. I appreciate that. I didn't know that.
This Commissioner Libby, I had one last question for staff. There was a comment about, um, the number of events on the site. I do recall from several other applications around wedding venues that there were um, conditions of approval around both number of events and frequency in a given time period. Um, there are no conditions in this, our recommendation around that. Can you just speak to some of the review criteria around number of events and frequency?
I think that goes back to criterion number one, uh, compatibility with the surrounding area. And just given how close this is to a major, to major population centers and, um, a lot of access and infrastructure and services. Um, we found that the proposed amount of events and frequency of events, um, was able to meet the criteria. And so it's the commitment of record that limits them to the number of events that they've proposed.
Can you restate the frequency, uh, proposal? I didn't see that in the report.
Uh, so during the peak season from May to October, it would be about three to four events per week. And then one to two events per week in the off-season. Um, and it came out to what I estimated as a hundred and thirty events per year. Um, and a hundred and fifty was put into the description for the docket, but it actually, uh, more accurately, I think comes out to about a hundred and thirty.
And that's a matter of record, the proposed number of events per week. So that's basically the restriction without an extra condition?
Correct. But if you, if the planning commission feels that it needs to be restricted further, that's up to you.
Okay, thank you.
Can I ask a follow-up question on that? The way that it's, this is Commissioner McMillan, sorry. The way that it's written, um, let's say they had, I don't know, twenty events over six months. Could they then have a hundred and thirty events in the next six months? Do you know what I mean? Are there any restrictions on the max number per week or the max number per month?
I think the restriction, um, because of the commitment of record is a hundred and thirty per year. And so if they use up all of those during the summer months, then they're done.
Or conversely, if they used only a few and they had a whole bunch left over, they could have a very busy month to get up to a hundred and thirty, for example?
Yes, that would, that would be true.
And then one, uh, additional question on, on the numbers too. Are, are the churches, the estimated church service, um, events, are those included in that event total?
I believe they are, but we could clarify that.
Okay. Okay, thanks.
Could the applicant clarify the number of events, the church and wedding combined?
Right. I was hoping you would ask. So the hundred and fifty events would cover both church services every Sunday and a hundred events of the, for the reception hall altogether. So a hundred and fifty events would cover that. Including the church.
And then any other questions from commissioners before we give the applicant and staff time to respond? Any public comments? Hearing none. Rena, do you have any comments you want to respond to?
No, I did not.
And then Courtney and the applicants.
Yeah, I'll get started. So I've taken notes, but some of you talked pretty fast. So if I, if I miss something, please let me know. But as far as traffic is concerned, we hired a traffic engineer that is very, as Rob said, very respectable in the industry and formerly worked for C dot. It was important, his credentials were important to us when we hired him. Because I am certainly not a traffic engineer and don't fully understand the impact of traffic. And we very much wanted to understand that. And as Rob said, an accident, particularly an accident related to alcohol could be detrimental to our business. And so it was important to us to understand this and to implement mitigation measure, measures. And it's part of the reason, some of these things that have come up is a part of these comments is the reason that we have Darcy here, who is a professional wedding consultant and has actually operated a venue within Boulder County and dealt with these issues hands-on, since I don't have wedding experience. So first I want to talk about like the number of events, and then I'll defer to Darcy on, on the alcohol-related ones. So as far as the traffic study goes, as I mentioned a little bit earlier after Gavin's question, Commissioner Gavin's, oh, I don't even know how to say that, Commissioner McMillan's question. Sorry, I hope I'm not being disrespectful. But our traffic engineer constructed this traffic study in a worst case scenario situation. And what, and at C dot's request, so that was one of the things that they initially requested when we reached out to them before we even submitted our application. And one of the things that they said is they would like to see a traffic study, the numbers ran with concurrent church and reception hall events at the same time as a worst-case scenario in their mind. So the traffic study that you see is a traffic study based on a church and a reception hall event occurring at the same time. Which, as you know from our presentation and Rainey's presentation, that this is not going to happen. But we appreciate C dot looking forward and trying to see the bigger picture before, before they raised any additional concerns related to it. And as I mentioned, from an accident perspective, I, it's absolutely tragic that there have been any lives lost on Highway two eighty-seven. And we feel that and, and I very much hope and will put in as many mitigation measures as possible to ensure that our, that our, our venue does not contribute to that. But there has, in order to complete an accident analysis, according to C dot standards, there has to be a certain number of accidents in a given area, as I understand it from our traffic engineer. Unfortunately, I wish he was here to be able to answer that question specifically. So I know a lot of concerns came up a lot around traffic. I want you to know that the reason that we budgeted for a traffic study in the first place was so that we could have a good understanding of this and try and mitigate it beforehand. Or if it wasn't going to work, we would like, we wanted to know that too. So we budgeted for that in order to have a better understanding of it. And really, at this point, because we aren't professional traffic engineers, we have to defer to the professionals. And that being C dot and our independent traffic engineer on, on what that impact is going to be. Darcy's going to talk really fast, if you're okay with that, about the mitigation measures with regard to people leaving the premises potentially after consuming alcohol.
Yeah, so a few mitigation measures that we've come up with and that are very common and standard across the board at venues. We will be requiring TIP certified bartenders. So those are just bartenders that are trained in recognizing individuals who may have been over served. BAC controls as well as a drink per hour limit. So if someone's coming up to the bar very frequently, they'll keep their eye on those kinds of red flags. We're also going to have a strict no shot policy. And we will obviously require shuttles for guests over, or weddings over two hundred. We're also going to be encouraging shuttles as well. And having shuttles for most weddings nowadays is very normal. Most people prefer it. So that's great news for us. We also will be offering coupon codes for Uber and Lyft. So if we see that someone may need to ride home and they drove to the venue, they can take a Uber or Lyft home and hopefully prevent any drunk driving issues as best as we can.
So moving on to the outside amplification that Mary Pearson brought up in her, or Mary and Gary Pearson brought up in their presentation. I appreciate you guys coming. Is the amplification outside and people leaving the event. So we have implemented a few measures in order to make sure that happens. The first one I think we mentioned is no amplified sound outside of the ceremony operations. And so ceremony operations tend to be thirty minutes at length. And Mary did mention that that the amplification outside isn't likely to be at four P M. all the time. And that is true. But I also want to mention that it's unlikely that a, that a client would choose to have their event outdoor or have their ceremony outdoors past a certain time of day. And the reason for this is pictures typically occur after the ceremony has commenced. And they would like, in most cases, good lighting. And with those mountain views, I imagine that this is going to be the case for us as well. And that we, we shouldn't see that these outdoor, that outdoor amplification should happen past, I would say dusk at the very, very latest. The other thing about that is the, I mentioned in my presentation that we will be purchasing noise mitigating devices. We have budgeted for this in our business plan and intend to limit the noise that happens outside using our own in-house amplification method. So it will be amplified for a short thirty-minute period of time and hopefully, and I don't even think hopefully, it shouldn't be past like a dusk sort of hour. And then at that point, things move indoors after the ceremony. So the farm-to-table was also brought up quite a few times and that the neighbors thought that that, for the most part, I can assume that felt like that was a good part of our business, but didn't believe that it was an integral part of our business. And I just want to reiterate that this is an integral part of our business. It's become very important to us as we've learned more about this property and we've learned more about the importance of agriculture in Boulder County and had a better understanding of it. We have already sent soil samples to CSU and started getting quotes on updating the head gate that already exists on our property for the irrigation ditch. We've also found a few places where we'll be able to hire local farmers to farm it. We won't be farming it ourselves. We'll be, we'll be contracting that out to a local farmer. And so we're kind of trying to preemptively get ready to do this. And honestly, I believe Joseph Henderson mentioned, why not do the farm first? And, and this, the farm part will be the first thing that we will attack, if that makes sense. So having sent the soil samples in, we have to do a weed, a manual weed removal, which will be happening in the next month or so out on the property. And then we have some measures that we have preemptively decided to do in the springtime, which will happen likely before construction even starts, is getting some nutrients, planting, planting some plants that will get some nutrients back into the soil. The soil is good for planting at this point, but it does need some nutrients added back into it. So we've started to look into those measures as, as with regard to the farm-to-table. Excuse me while I turn my page for my notes. And there was, I believe Nicole or Joseph mentioned that there aren't any agricultural activities on the property. And it's true that Joseph was farming that one point six or two acres for us for a while. And, and using that alfalfa to feed their, their camels, which was a great arrangement and we're happy to bring that back at any point. But it was talked about that there is no other agriculture on the land. And that is absolutely true. It hasn't been for a while. One person did try to come in and use the land and use the water, but they weren't using the water appropriately. As Ron and I have both kind of alluded to. And so our plan is to bring, bring this beautiful piece of land back into agricultural production. That's very important to us. Prior to David Roy's unfortunate passing, which thank you Nicole for bringing that up. My husband had a relationship with him, although a very informal relationship, a relationship nonetheless. He was planning to graze his cattle on the northwest corner of our property. So we will be looking for, if, if his family is not going to be carrying that on, we'll be looking for someone to, to do that and then graze. And then we'll also look at, into both crock production and a potential ranch opportunity south of the, south of the irrigation ditch. Nicole, I see your comment that he didn't have any cows. He planned to purchase some in a conversation that he had with my husband. So thank you for throwing that in there. Yes, he does not have any cows yet. He planned on putting up a fence and purchasing some cattle and grazing them in part on our property. Thank you. Also, as far as there being enough water, I don't have a total, a great understanding of water. But I'm learning a lot, as I've learned a lot about land use code and many other things after going through this process. And I believe that I spoke to our ditch rider for the supply ditch, which is who we have our ditch shares through. And he explained what the two acre feet means, some of the additional measures that we will be, have access to. And that is river water during certain times of the year. And so that's where I gained my understanding. I have gained my understanding and learned a lot as far as ditch water goes. I, we have no intention of selling or leasing these, the supply ditch water at this point. What we just don't want to happen is not use all of it and then, and then find that we can't transfer that to another farmer. But I really appreciate Ron you clarifying that we can lease it even if it's attached. And so I think that that makes a very amicable solution to the concern that we had in that we can lease it if we don't use them all. But we may get in there and find that we're using all of the water. And so that's very much a possibility. I don't want to rule that out or, or assume that I think that we're going to use less than. It's just that we just were thinking of worst-case scenario. So thank you for allowing me the time to address, address that. As far as the noise study goes, the noise study is similar. He's a licensed engineer. And so he's also stamped his report, which I'm happy to provide to anyone who, should they want a copy of this report. He's actually stamped it. And so he's a licensed engineer, much like a traffic engineer. And so he is considered a professional in his field and able to speak on that. And so I understand that there is a lot of mistrust that comes along with that noise study. But I hope that I am able to rest your, leave your concerns to rest by, by reiterating that he is a professional engineer and these numbers aren't something we just made up or he just made up. It's, there's a very scientific analysis in which I have very little understanding of that goes into decibel measurement at, over certain distances, using certain barriers inside of certain kinds of buildings with certain kind of noise mitigating measures, et cetera.
Can I add in a little bit about the noise?
Yeah, of course.
Because Mary had mentioned that the, the berms that we're proposing there for mitigating sound. Actually, those berms will not mitigate sound from the inside going out. It'll mitigate sound from the outside going in. So the benefit would only be along Highway two eighty-seven. So all our noise studies had nothing to do with those berms. I verified this with a noise engineer. Following the noise study, I asked him directly, if we put berms out there, will that help mitigate? He said, no. So we are not proposing that these berms will mitigate any sound exiting the property. So if they do end up going away, it has no effect on our, our sound leaving the property. We're just hoping to utilize a little screening on both sides from Highway two eighty-seven. And of course, the noise levels were taken. Darcy took the noise levels actually with the, with an app, a very good app at the highway. And they were at fifty-seven and higher, sixty, fifty-seven to sixty-eight. So, and that was at what time of day?
That was at ten AM during the week. So yeah, that's what it was.
Just a little added information from what, what Mary was talking, Mary, I'm sorry, Ms. Pearson was talking about. So I wanted to add that. Go ahead, Courtney.
Right. And so I believe Susan brought that up is that we have, we considered the noise coming off of two eighty-seven. And we definitely have considered that. And it had a lot to do with building placement and some of the screening tactics used in our proposal. And then I also saw that Susan mentioned that Saturday afternoon was the worst traffic. And I think that that is a really interesting point, and I appreciate you bringing it up. So the traffic study, the way that it works is he initially takes traffic counts and counts the number of cars that come through at certain times of day. They use very like technical measurements to calculate all of this out. And that's where, where he came up with the, the, the part of his study said that most of the traffic from the event venue would not occur during peak hours on the highway. And I think that's a very unique part of our business is that it's sort of not during normal times of day. And so, and so we're able to, our traffic impact is, is limited to a certain extent because, because the times of day that people will be traveling are, are outside of peak hours for the most part.
Now you had one, one other from, from Ms. Pearson. They talked about non-living residents and Courtney can talk to this, that they had hoped to build a house out there. But it cannot be, it's not allowed as a accessory use of what they're designing out there and plan on using. But it might, might maybe noted that they basically will be living out there because they'll be running the operation during the day. They just won't be sleeping out there. This is pretty heavily, as far as the, the work that's involved, pretty intense on, on the work level. So they will be out there probably more than most people will who live out there on a daily basis, just not sleeping out there. Just wanted to add that.
Right. When we purchased the property, we had hoped that we would build a house on it as well. But I learned in an email from one of the planners back in May of last year that we can't have those principal use of a, we can't have a residence as an accessory to a principal use of a reception hall. I, sorry planners, if I totally botched how I said that. My apologies. I believe I addressed Rob unless, or Darcy, unless you guys have anything else to add. I believe I addressed most of the concerns and comments that came in from the public. Thank you guys so much for, for taking the time to both write in and come to this meeting. I think that this democratic sort of process is super important or representative process. I'm not sure how to put it, but it's very important to finding, you know, a way to live together. And hopefully, hopefully we'll. Hopefully we'll have less of an impact than you have originally thought and I I I think. I think if we're able to to move forward on this, that we're looking forward to. Hopefully living closer someday, but working along next to you in your homes.
I can add one more thing if I may. There's always a discussion in planning, land planning and such as planning committees and meetings about property values. And there's no, there's no proof that property values will will decrease with with the development on a neighboring property unless it. Is something that of industrial, different zoning use. And this has been allowed, not a straight loud use. That the chapel is a is a use by right on this property. Which, you know, utilizes about the same ideals, except for the reception part of the the wedding. And this is a use by special review, which is allowed if we meet certain criterias on this property. So. Typically, property values always come up. It's it's not so much property values. It's 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 people. Understanding of. Sellability, I guess, and people's perspective of maybe they don't want to live next to a hemp farm or. Camel ranch or anything else that that's out there that may produce something they don't like. So everything out there has something to do. With sellability, but not property values. It's a misnomer. It's been proven a number of times. I've been through this a number of times on both sides of the table, as I said. And I just wanted to to bring that into discussion because that was brought up pretty strongly with our last. Last participant. Anyway, thank you.
Okay, thank you. And with that response, we're going to close public comment. Thank you all for your inputs and we'll move into planning commission discussion and eventual motions if appropriate.
This is Commissioner Fitch. I'd like to ask Rainey. About this. Statement in the transportation section that says. That there would be restriping of. Two eighty seven at the entrance to allow for a acceleration and deceleration. Lanes using the existing roadway. So is that considered a commitment of record? And if so, who's going to do that? Is that something the applicant pays for or something that the county is going to do? Or C dot's going to do? How does that, how does that statement get implemented?
So that is a commitment of record and I believe it actually was a result of C dot's comments in the initial exploration by the applicant. And so that's why they included it in their application. And so it's between the applicant and C dot and about getting that in place. And I would just assume that it's going to be at the applicant's cost, but that C dot will do the work.
Thank you.
This is Commissioner Bloomfield. I have a question, Rainey. If, can you, can you speak to the. The burns and, you know, the the applicant's idea that. Keeping the the dirt on the property would be beneficial. What is staff's take on that?
Staff views the burns as an unnecessary alteration of the existing and natural topography. And as stated by the applicant, those burns are for preventing noise trespass coming. Onto the property to the reception hall, not going off of the property. And so we, staff thinks that it's more appropriate to put in additional tree screening rather than altering the topography.
Got it. Thank you.
This Commissioner Libby to add on to that. I also had some questions about the burns. I I guess my question, which I think Mark asked and I didn't hear you answer any was about the the removal of soil from the site. So in the in the cut and regreating plan that's provided. If the burns are not approved, then there would be a significant removal of soil from the site. Is that correct?
Yes, I believe so. And they may need to work out a hauling plan with C dot or our. Road maintenance and transportation folks, if that's the case, if we end up not approving the burns.
Thank you. Any other discussion? This is Commissioner Libby. I have a couple, my couple areas of comments. One, I just mentioned about the burns. I'm generally. I guess supportive of keeping the burns and not passing that condition forward. I think they help with. The view protection and putting trees there, in my opinion, would be more of a visual impact on the view corridor than the burns themselves potentially. So I'm interested in talking more about that. And then Gavin and I both commented or asked questions about the number of events that were allowed and some kind of. Better. Guide guidelines around that. I understand that there's some discussion in the record about them, but it seems more appropriate to me to have that spelled out in a condition. Those are my two areas of of discussion. Otherwise, I'm generally supportive of the conditions that are proposed.
This is Commissioner Hilton on that last point around the commitment of record. I tend to agree. So if I'm understanding what the commitment of record is, it includes language like. Resulting in approximately one hundred and thirty events, number of anticipated events per week is three to four. It it seems like there's some. Lack of precision that we might nail down tighter with the condition.
This Commissioner McMillan, I have the same. Areas for discussion that you, other commissioners have brought up. I'll add one. In the in the area of parking. As Commissioner Gargano mentioned earlier in this presentation, it's a lot of parking. And I do appreciate the effort to. Have a shuttle service and I think it would be absolutely crucial for the operation. But I also think that the truth of parking is if you build it, people will drive. They tend to to know it's there and. And so I wonder if we're overparked. I know. You all arrived at this this number collectively, so I don't fault fault anyone at this time, but. You know, if we have one hundred eleven parking spaces for. Three hundred people max at at max capacity. I just feel like most people will drive, even if there's the option of a shuttle. So. I'm interested in hearing what if this is a concern to other commissioners in our discussion right now. Maybe fleshing it out a little bit.
This is Commissioner Gargano. We're thinking very similarly. While one hundred and ten, you know, that is probably about a third of, you know, it's a little over a third of the number of people that would be on the property. If it is only three minutes from town and we are encouraging shuttles already. You know. Can't, is it, is it the right number? It's definitely where my head's at. Other concerns I had, I didn't like the burns because we've talked about previously that the burns are not. In the, you know, the county doesn't like them. So I'm glad that we removed those. I forgot my third dot, but I'll come back to it.
This Commissioner Libby, just on the parking issue Gavin, I, the way I thought about that also was that it is a mixed, like a dual use site. So for a, for a church service, I think the odds of. Individuals driving themselves or in small groups is higher than for a shuttle enabled wedding event. And this proposal does allow for simultaneous events, in which case there is a need for quite a bit of parking, I can see. So for a wedding that's, you know, well planned and encourages shuttles, then sure, maybe it's only half used, but. With no overflow or street parking nearby and no overflow allowed in the property and the current conditions. I guess my thought is it could service the edge case of two large events at the same time. But yeah, it is, it is quite large. I think for if it was just a church on the property, you'd see a similar sized parking lot in a proposal is my guess.
This Commissioner Gargano, I guess that I was thinking about the Sunday thing differently in the sense that you'd have church service and then you'd allow. A wedding or an event venue to show up at noon where you'd expect church services to end by noon. So I was assuming they would not be on the property at the same time.
No, I I agree. It's not a requirement right now that they would be separate though.
Okay, so maybe we need to make, I I would like to then maybe make that a clearer.
This is Commissioner Hilton. So I think in what we're considering the commitment of record, it says. That they're not occurring at the same time.
Okay, that's what I thought.
Church service occurring between. Let's see here. Yeah, as proposed, only one event would be held each day except on Sundays when the space would be donated donated to religious organization. From nine AM to noon and then separate event may take place in the afternoon.
Yeah, okay, good. Then it is already explicit, which is what I was hoping for. The other, this is Commissioner Gargano again. Sorry, I remembered my third point. Thinking about the agricultural discussions that we've had recently, talking to some of our local, amazing local. Farmers and our farming community about some of the struggles, you know, we talked about. Permission for solar gardens and other mixed use as farmers struggle to make enough money, right? And for our agricultural uses to continue. So I would say the biggest thing I'm struggling with here is that. The culture or like the community. And rural aesthetic of the area, right? And the peace and quiet and dealing with the traffic. But also the desire that we've had as a as a county to create these different uses and to offer. Both farming and agricultural use to encourage properties like this that maybe haven't been as agricultural as we'd like. To go back to some of those uses and be able to make a profit with a second function or business. This seems to fall into that. So this is where I'm kind of. It's I'm so back and forth, right? Because we've heard so much from our farming community that they really need. Sort of opportunities like this and we're all, you know, but we also often hear from our neighbors and neighborhoods. That they're concerned with traffic and and noise. So I'm feeling very stuck in the middle.
This is Commissioner Fitch. I'd like to support what Lisa just said. And recall that. Even though this is taking some part of that parcel for. Essentially accessory use. That in fact, the current. Farm isn't being farmed. It's one point six acres in agriculture that's listed in the packet. And the proposal would restore that to eighty five percent or maybe more now with the reconsideration. Over eighty five percent into agricultural production. So. So I think I think it's important to do that. And important to figure out ways that again, not just in this particular proposal, but. To make it economical in the county for people to actually conduct farming operations. So I I support the requirement that the water stay with the land. And. If you want to talk more about. But I think the commitments of record are are there with respect to both farm to table and to using the currently. Unused portions of the land. I guess the third thing I would say is that if you look at that. At the agricultural land classifications. It's actually only a small part of the whole parcel that's really land of national importance. A bigger portion that's statewide and portioned. And actually the biggest proportion in that lot, at least that. According to the map seems to be agricultural land of local importance. So. This is not. From my perspective, at least taking land out of agricultural production, it's actually adding some land. Back into agricultural production that's currently not being used.
Commissioner Libby, are there any other, I guess, topics people would like to consider additional conditions on? We talked about the number of events per year and week. I have something prepared to talk about for that, but are there any other topics we should be discussing?
This is Commissioner Bloomfield. I'll say that I'm generally in support with what's being discussed. I guess I'm not sure if I I missed it up. I apologize if I did, but in the parking discussion. Can staff comment on? Actual requirements versus. Recommendations, in other words, in terms of how the one hundred and eleven was achieved. Is that, are there, are there actual parking minimums or is this more? Just based on estimates of, you know, of what the usage will be and could that actually be impacted by? The the either requirement or whatever of a shuttle.
Rainey Ott with staff. Let me look at my code really quick to get you the correct number on what the code says is required. For the reception hall use. So it states that one space per thirty square feet of floor area is required. But then when you look at the parking, the actual accessory parking portion of the code, that use. It says that we, the director can determine that a different number for parking. May be required based on site specific and operational specific circumstances. So I think I'm going to hand it over to Jennifer Severson, who's here from the engineering group. To speak a little bit more about how we came to the conclusion that one hundred and eleven spaces is appropriate.
Yeah, hi, this is Jennifer Severson with community planning and permitting. The way that we generally do these is, and what our referral comments say is. The parking lot has to comply with the. The multimodal transportation standards for parking lot design. There are also a couple of standards. Lighting, accessibility, visibility that are actually in the land use code. It's not all in one place. But I think the one hundred and eleven, it wasn't an exact number. It was more of the fact that with the. The max number of people that were being proposed. And then the assumption that two and a half people would would be in each vehicle, passenger vehicle. That was what the traffic study. Was based on and what we've accepted before for other reception venues. If you take two hundred and fifty people and divide it by two and a half, you're you're getting fifty vehicles. So the one hundred and eleven is more than enough. I don't think we actually looked at the church use. We were really looking more at the wedding venue use or how many people were in a vehicle. I think the churches probably have more people in a vehicle, families, things like that. So. But we look at it a lot more closely when they submit their plans for permitting. If that helps.
So can you, can you help me understand? You just said. That the max was, well, I I think the max was three hundred, but you mentioned two hundred and fifty. That would actually, what's that?
That may have been incorrect. I'm sorry. I was looking at their proposal and I I hadn't had a chance to actually read Rainey's final staff record. I've been out of town for a bit. So if it's three hundred, then it would be sixty cars.
Right. And so, so is there any? I mean, have have you all had any sort of mitig- I mean, have have you all had any sort of mitigation, if you will? By saying, okay, we're going to have 300 people. We expect 2.5 people per car, but then we're also expecting a shuttle. And so that's going to reduce the demand by X.
So there is, I'm trying to find the second referral comments that went out. While I was gone, and I think we put something in there about. See. Yeah, we were limiting the number of parking spaces. So basically, no more than 111 vehicles can be parked on site. That also must include employee and vendor parking. And then anything over that would have to be shuttled. So they can't park anywhere else on site. That's kind of one way that informally we can limit that. They're not allowed to park along the entrance road because that would block emergency vehicle access. So they can't have more than 111 spaces.
Right. But I think what we're, we're trying to get to less than 1100, 111 spaces. So we're just, I'm trying to get, I'm trying to get a feel for is 111 some sort of like hard requirement? Or do we actually have some flexibility to say, maybe it's 75 or 80, or I don't know what the number is, but.
I think what Rainey mentioned about the land use code allows that flexibility. If it's, is it every 30 square feet, Rainey, or is it every 300 square feet of space?
It's one per 30 square feet.
Okay. And it's the same. The first one, how, do you remember what that came out to? Because I am looking for my numbers and not finding them. I apologize. What's their total square footage? I think they have more space than they need.
They did have 11,500 ish. But the cabins are no longer included.
And those were 400 square feet apiece? And there were how many of them?
Four 900 square foot cabins.
So you do some quick math. I think they have more spaces than they need, but again. We don't know how they're going to line up the vendors, so I feel like they do kind of need a buffer. I just don't know how big that buffer is. I can do some quick math and hope I get it right. But, you know, it has to accommodate the vendors. It has to accommodate the employees. So it's not just that two and a half people per vehicle number. But.
Would it be possible for me to just jump in and, or no?
It's not possible. I'm sorry.
Thank you.
And Rainey, how much was the total you said?
Trying to pull it up now. My computer is being very.
I'm sorry. Yeah, and I don't. Removing the 36,000. And then I'll divide it by 300.
I mean, what I'm getting, this is Commissioner Gargano. What I'm getting from this discussion is that while it feels like a lot of parking to us, considering how close it is to town. That because of the vendors, because of the nature of this particular permit with this use. This feels like the minimum number of parking spots.
Yeah, and actually, when I'm looking at this, and again, I apologize, there were a lot of addendums and referrals and discussion that went about, and it started months ago. If the total number, Rainey, did you get that the number of square feet? Because the total number of people allowed at any event is 300. Is that right?
Correct.
Your final staff rec?
Yep, including vendors and staff.
Okay, so that actually results in 100. If we just use that two and a half, we're looking at 120. I don't know where I came up with the 50 or 60, sorry. So that is more than they actually have space for. So that's going to. Let's say they wanted to max out the 300 people guests at a wedding event. Already, they're going to have to require some sort of shovel service or carpooling because they don't have enough spaces to accommodate that. I think that was probably built in through how they came up with those spaces. Does that help any? I mean, we can certainly. Ask them for more information about how they came to that number and then do a double check against, you know, the, whatever the final square footage is. If it's what was proposed and then make sure that they meet the land use code. You know, and then after that, I think they're going to have to figure out how they accommodate that because they can't just randomly park on the side of the road. And they they are limited to that number that is actually in, was in our comments, and I believe it's actually in Rainey's staff rec. That they can't expand that number.
And I'll just jump in here because I have a few hard numbers that I had written down. I just had to find them. So per the land use code at one space per 30 square feet. And this is plus the one per overnight lodging room. So plus the four cabins. It was going to be 269 spaces required as the minimum per the code. And then for their traffic study with 2.5 occupants per vehicle at a 300 person event, that's 123 spaces.
This Commissioner Libby, I think based on that, and I think what we're hearing is that this is reasonable, if not maybe lower than what could have been proposed. So my suggestion would just be for staff that you add something to the presentation of the Board of County Commissioners if this moves forward to there. To provide some more details around parking so they don't have the same questions again.
Thank you. Will do.
Thank you.
Agreed.
Are there any other discussion topics? I was going to discuss a potential additional condition around number of events. And I'm in favor of moving forward to the recommendation with additional condition if others are.
Yeah, I, this is Commissioner McMillan. I'm also comfortable moving towards a recommendation of approval. I guess one last question to staff on the related to parking, and then we can put that thing to bed in my eyes at least. The shuttle requirement, is that part of the? What is, what is on the record of like how they're required to use shuttle parking or shuttle services? For the events, is it? Over a certain size? Are there any qualifiers or is it just that every, every wedding has to use a shuttle? What do we currently have?
So the commitment of record and as we've put, we reiterated in the conditions of approval. Once an event reaches 200 people, including staff and vendors that are going to be on site. That is when they are required to provide shuttle service.
Okay. Thank you. I'm satisfied with the parking discussion for now, Commissioner Libby. And yeah, and I also. Am leaning towards a recommendation of approval with with that one additional condition. Just putting some, some boundaries on the number of events.
Yeah, so my suggestion for that is Commissioner Libby would be additional conditions or restrict the number of events to no more than 150 events. Whether wedding events or church events in a calendar year. And no more than for such events in a calendar week from Monday through Sunday. There's a seasonality implied in the proposal. I don't think it's that relevant.
This Commissioner Gargano, I like where you're headed, Sam. You know, I think we've done that before with other requirements, maxing out the number per week. I remember who it was that brought it up before, but you know, we don't want. There to be, you know, an event every single day for a month or something like that. The other thing I was thinking about with the, the noise. You know, knowing that everything has to be done at 10 o'clock. You know, I was just trying to think about. I'm just sort of spinning around the noise requirements, but it kind of seems like. You know. Meeting those existing noise limits. Kind of seems like the best we can do.
Yes, this Commissioner Libby, my perspective would just be that. As we've discussed in the past, a study is a study and we can take as much from that as we individually feel we should, but. I feel as the applicants shown a great interest in improving noise impacts and working with neighbors on that. Through their statements and their proposal and proposed mitigations. And expected if there were issues above and beyond what was kind of forecast that they would work to mitigate those as well. So I'm comfortable with the noise part of it.
Agreed. This is Commissioner Bloomfield, and I would say kind of the same thing with traffic. You know, I definitely hear that that traffic is a concern and it's increased. I think that we have to leave that up to C dot to make sure that that's handled properly. And I feel comfortable doing that.
This is Commissioner Gargano, certainly the, what we've heard from the neighbors of the property and just from. Driving on 287, right? That that's beyond this property. That's it's beyond this. Property owner and it's really about C dot and managing that and also acknowledging the changes that have happened in that area over the last, you know, 10 to 20 years. But to your point, it goes beyond what we, beyond our purview.
All right. I'm ready to offer a motion with that condition if everybody's okay with that. All right. So I'm going to move that the planning commission recommend that the Board of County Commissioners conditionally approve docket SU dash 20 dash 0003, the Jubilee Acres Reception Hall. With the. 17 conditions included in the staff report and an additional condition that states. That the number of events per year will be restricted to 150 events, whether wedding events or church events. And that no more than for such events will take place in a given calendar week from Monday through Sunday.
Commissioner Gargano, just a quick question. I think if we specify. Do we just say religious or other events to make sure we're covering all types of events? I just don't want to.
Sure.
Create an accident.
Well. And I want to maybe intentionally, this is Commissioner Bloomfield, intentionally create a loophole. One, one thought that I had that, you know, they mentioned that there, there might be some use for like some business meetings and stuff like that. I'm wondering if we should put. Some kind of like, you know, 30 or 50 person for events over 30 or 50 people so that they could have like just a small business meeting or something like that.
Oh, Commissioner, that just gets so tough because we don't know how many staff there are going to be between the farm. I mean. Obviously, there's not going to be 30 staff for the farm, but. Yeah, let's.
Yes, Commissioner Libby, there's also a by right type of, you know, event or gathering you can have on a cultural property. You know, there's already something that exists there. So. I think if we try to get too specific, we'll end up not doing anything at all. I guess I'm not. I don't think the intent is to restrict 20 or 30 person business gatherings or a pre wedding event for preparation or things like that. It's to restrict. The events that are weddings or large church events, which is why I put those words in there originally.
Fair enough. Okay, I agree with that then.
Okay, so I'll just restate the, the motion. The that we moved to recommend approval to the Board of County Commissioners of this docket. Docket 20 dash SU dash 20 dash 003, this Jubilee Acres Reception Hall. Notes with the additional condition to restrict number of events to no more than 150 events, whether wedding events or church events in a calendar year. And no more than for such events in a calendar week.
Commissioner Fitch shall second that motion.
Okay, thank you. Any discussion before vote? Okay, so we'll move to a roll call vote. Mark Bloomfield.
Hi.
Sam Fitch.
Hi.
Sam Libby.
Hi, Gavin McMillan.
Hi.
Dan Hilton.
Hi.
And Leishan Gargano.
Hi.
Okay, motion passes. Thank you all. Thank you for the applicant and the comments from the public. And I propose we take a five minute break now for everyone's benefit. Any opposition to that? So let's come back at approximately two minutes after 4:00 PM. We'll continue with the next docket. Thank you. All right, so we're going to come back to session and move on to docket DC dash 20 dash 0002. Which is a land use code discussion around accessory meat or poultry processing, and I think Alberto is presenting.
Good afternoon. Thank you so much, commissioners. I would like to go ahead and show my screen now. Please give me one second as I figure that out. For some reason, it is not. I'm having some difficulties sharing. Okay, let's see if this works. I apologize for the delay.
It's okay.
Anna, it is telling me that I cannot share until I log off and restart Zoom. Would you be able to bring me back into the, the presentation?
Absolutely.
Okay, thank you so much.
Your time.
I think any other option would be having Alberto send his presentation to somebody else who can share it if he's able to join by audio.
Right. Once he's joined and we try to correct the issue with him being a panelist, if it doesn't work, we will do that.
Yeah, Anna, I already emailed him about that or texted him that same comment.
Great. Yeah, I'm just waiting on him to reenter the meeting.
Thank you, everybody. Let's hope that this one works, which I think it does. So. Are you all able to see the presentation now? Wonderful. Right. Appreciate everyone's patience, and I will briefly go over the proposed land use code text amendment for accessory meat and poultry processing. My name is Alberto Dos Rios. I'm Planner One in Long Range Division of Community Planning and Permitting. The overall purpose of this update is to create an exist, an agricultural use that currently does not exist in land use code, which would. Separate a more intensive use for agricultural operations that is currently laid out. In section 4 dash 501D of land use code. And also it would bolster and further a goal that was identified back in 2018. For expanding opportunities and options for the agricultural community to have more sustainable practices, overall expand the economy and have more agency in farming. As you might have seen in the staff recommendation, this is the proposed land use code amendment. And we can always reference back to this over the discussion. Also, just wanted to briefly mention that these are the referral agencies that shared comments and overall there were no agencies that were opposed to this. And their comments helped us shape the current proposed language. And most importantly, I also wanted to go over the criteria review. That it was already identified by the Board of County Commissioners that the existing is in need of a land use code text amendment. This one is not contrary to the purpose of the code and it is in accordance to the Boulder County Comprehensive Plan, which lines to goals. M1 and Policies Ag. 1.02, 1.05, and 1.13 of the Boulder County Comprehensive Plan. I would like to move to. As the planning commission to recommend that the county commissioners approve the land use code amendment regarding docket DC 200002. Accessory meat and poultry processing. So we'd like to open it up to comments, questions, and any other items of discussion.
Thank you, Alberto. That was definitely a efficient presentation. This Commissioner Libby, any comments or questions from the other commissioners before I share mine? This commissioner Libby, any comments or questions from the other commissioners before I share mine? But my first comment, this commissioner Libby was around the, I read. Pretty extensive public comments from people obviously very closely involved in this topic. Which is great, and it sounds like you've already incorporated a number of those. Into the text. My main takeaway from that was that there was some concern about the restriction of animal units of processing per month. And so I'm interested in what. I guess what process led to that decision on ten and what would be the issue with increasing that? If we wanted to make that recommendation.
Thank you, Commissioner Libby. The overall argument for making ten animal units is that first, instead of selecting and placing a limit on specific animals, animal units provides more flexibility and what type of animal can be used. Second, making this a monthly requirement instead of a daily or weekly requirement allows for people to. Process on a seasonal basis and this also prompts more efficiency because from the accounts of several farmers that I engaged with, they said that. Working on a seasonal basis instead of on a day by day makes it more efficient because of the setup and the cleanup and the way that the processing of animals. Regarding the number, this is a compromise between comments from the farming community and also comments from. Residents that are not related to the agricultural community, so overall, we want this to be a discreet. Update that does not create a very intensive use in the land and also, but still allows for individuals to process their own animals.
Okay, thank you. The other question I had was related to the restriction on the size of refrigeration and butchering units, there's a square footage restriction recommended in there. I don't really have any basis to know how big or small that is. But it seems to me that that would be. Potentially covered by any building permits that are submitted, like there already would be square footage restrictions on a commercial building. That would be proposed that those would fall inside of. So what is the need to restrict those further?
Thank you for that question, Commissioner Libby, the overall argumentation for that was because, given the feedback of some farmers, this would be a very small. Attachment accessory, the structure that could be permissible with this use, but also. We were told that in case that they desire to make any additions that. This would not exceed in in the in the. The possibility that they would like to build something larger. Because ultimately, they do have to abide to any standards from the. Building code, any commercial building code standards, but the goal was to keep it very small, very small size and scale. Does that answer your question?
I think so, yeah, definitely. Tries to keep it small, I guess I'm just always concerned about restricting that.
Maybe if I can interject to, this is Hannah Hippely, Long Range Planning Manager, the the building code doesn't actually place a restriction on the size here.
Just, yeah, my my comment, this commissioner Libby, was that the land use code would already restrict the size of a building if it was proposed, as I understand it, in square footage, the building code doesn't, I misspoke.
It went for residential floor area, our approached agricultural structures is a lot more flexible, there aren't really hard limits or. Parameters around the size of agricultural accessory buildings.
Okay, thank you for the clarification.
Sure.
Thank you, Anna.
My last question, just to check and be finished, was around, I'm assuming there's some kind of permitting or USDA review of some of these activities. Of a accessory use for for animal processing. Can you speak to anything that exists around that, or is it basically elective and there's no additional requirements if they're within these requirements?
Given the nature of that of this update and the purpose, it abides to all the regulations and all exemptions provided by both the United States Department of Agriculture and the Colorado. Department of Agriculture and therefore they are exempt from inspections. Given that they would have to abide to a very narrow and limited way in which they can process these animals and as long as these people are not. Processing these animals for commercial uses other than. Personal consumption or consumption of those who are shareholders of these animals, then. They do not have to go through the. Conventional USDA or Kodak standards, however, anything beyond that, then they they would have to acquire a license and they would have to abide to. Any other commercial requirements.
There's a mention of mobile processing, could that mobile processing potentially be licensed in a way that then that does allow commercial sale of the products?
Yes, if they follow all regulatory agencies.
Okay, thanks, that's all my comments.
This is Commissioner Bloomfield, I actually have a quick question about the animal units. It says ten livestock, two swine and or goats, or five hundred chickens. I I I'm just curious about the seeming disparity to me, at least ten livestock, like if I'm thinking ten cows. Seems like a lot more than two pigs.
I'm sorry, are you which, because in the.
Looking at page three of the packet.
If I may clarify, the the provisions that are outlined in the proposed language just mentioned ten animal units.
Right, so I was looking for a definition of animal units.
If you search for D one mark in the packet, there's an attachment that goes into that. That's what I found most useful.
D one.
Yeah, it's it's a appendix or attachment. From the code.
All right, I'll take a look at that, you guys can go on.
This is Commissioner McMillan. I note that we say districts permitted. By right, which I assume means there's no process. To permit the use. But my question is about the clarification that we make in here that says, for example, by right in F. Which I assume is forestry. Unsubdivided. What is the unsubdivided clarification trying to get at there? What are you trying to avoid?
Thank you, so the goal with unsubdivided for specific zoning districts is to limit the nature for which in where this use can be done. Particularly for parcels that would be of smaller size. And therefore, create a potential nuisance for non agricultural residents in the neighboring area.
So subdivided parcels are more likely to be in residential areas, for example?
Yes, and these could entail, given that agricultural, open agricultural uses are allowed in all districts. Then this would limit then, given the size of the parcel, since they would only in these specific districts would only be unsubdivided.
Okay. Maybe you've done this analysis, perhaps not, but you, are there any un. Unanticipated consequences of that, like. Say I have a. Ten acre parcel that I subdivided into two five acre. Properties. Seems like that would be okay. For the intended use in terms of being distant from other things, but by the code here. Wouldn't be permitted. Is that type of thing out there, or am I just making up problems that that don't exist?
Thank you for mentioning that, I do not recall that staff have considered that potential outcome. And I will certainly bring that into consideration moving forward.
Okay, I I understand what you're trying to do and I think it makes sense, I might just suggest. Doing a quick analysis before the county commissioners hearing to make sure you're not. Unintend- unintendingly excluding. A lot of properties.
Thank you.
That's my only question.
This is Commissioner Hilton. I have a question about the setback, twenty-five foot setback. Would the outdoor activity, could that include? Slaughtering and and then second question. How was the twenty-five foot number arrived at?
Thank you for that, so this would allow, the setback in general would allow for more distancing from our property lines to avoid. Any residential nuisance, again, we want to make sure that we're providing an option for. Our agricultural community, but also respecting the comments of non agricultural residents, so the setbacks overall would. Limit in the area in which any uses associated with this activity would be allowed. And given that all zoning districts provide. Different setbacks, we just wanted to do a more universal one that would provide a buffer between neighboring parcels and this associated users. Does it answer your question?
Yes, so. And a valid activity for this use could be slaughtering.
Correct.
Okay, thanks.
This is Commissioner Gargano, so I'm trying to, Dan, just wondering a little more where you're headed, so are we assuming? People could potentially. Slaughter animals in the open air twenty-five feet from a property line, is that what you're picturing?
Yes. You know, like, you know, especially if like larger animals are involved, I assume there's going to be. I I can imagine some conflicts, twenty-five feet. Doesn't necessarily seem like a very long distance if we're including. You know, larger animals like beef and pigs.
This is Commissioner Libby, my my other comment, I had my notes was around the the time limitation, Alberto. So the current text says up to ten animal units per month. I think it'd be good to clarify, like, calendar month or per period of one month. I mean, I'm just thinking in theory, if you're trying to keep it from being too intensive. If the thirty-first of the month is a Saturday, you could basically. Do twenty units in one weekend, right? So the intent of that, I think, should be clear in terms of spreading out the impact and some kind of language adjustment.
Thank you for that, I had certainly not considered that potential outcome for that.
Hannah Hippely, Long Range Planning Manager, again, does language something more like. A limitation on animal units within any thirty day period? Address that concern?
Yeah, that's a good example of a way you could change that towards what I think you intended from it.
Thank you.
This is Commissioner Libby, Dan, do you want to suggest a different setback or a different way of dealing with that, I guess I share your concern now that you've described it. So vividly of a twenty-five foot activity happening near the boundary of a. Another household of some kind, right, with a bigger setback work or what do you suggest?
Yeah, I'm not sure, I guess I don't know much about this topic, twenty-five feet. You know, we have to consider the possibility that this use could be adjacent to. You know, we we may have a forestry district that's adjacent to another type of district. And I'm not sure that twenty-five feet of. Of an outdoor activity. Couldn't be. Something that was pretty disturbing to an adjacent property owner, overall, I support the the concept, I'm just trying to. Think about. Conflicts that that could arise when, you know, especially when we're talking about larger animals, when we're talking about an activity that is. Slaughtering and the things that go along with that. I don't know that twenty-five feet seems. Adequate to me, at least for outdoor activities.
This is Commissioner Gargano, Alberto, are there other other counties that have similar? Measure, you know, similar regulations and that are using twenty-five feet, or do they use different setbacks?
Yes, if you may allow me for pulling out some information regarding that.
Yeah, maybe while we do that, I could just suggest we move to public comment and we have discussion following that with that information from Alberto, you guys good with that?
Oh, I just pulled it out of.
Okay, go ahead.
So Adams County, Adams County does have a slaughterhouse, like a slaughtering regulation and. For their their use, they would only permit five acres and all facilities designated and located with full consideration to their proximity. To adjacent residential districts and uses, and especially to the real, the reduction of nuisance factors, therefore, they're really considering that. Nuisance mitigation, whether it is odor, noise, or any other byproducts are heavily mitigated, given the full consideration of. Adjacent districts and they also have a minimum of thousand feet from any residential soul classification and from any residence, they also have a three hundred foot setback from right of way. And ingress and egress provided at a control location must approach public street at the right angle, however, that would not apply to this specific update, given that this would only be with animals raised on site.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Any other questions this time before we move to comment? Okay. So we're now going to open public hearing for. Docket number. DC dash twenty dash zero zero two, I previously covered the speaking requirements and recommendations, I'll be happy to clarify if any questions come up. In the interest of time, let's see if anybody would like to speak, I don't think we have anybody signed up ahead of time or in the chat as as far as I can tell, Anna.
That's correct.
Okay, is there anybody who is has not signed up who would like to speak either on the phone or in the meeting? Hearing none, I'm going to close public comment. And move back to discussion by the planning commission or further questions for staff.
This is Commissioner Gargano, I think, just from back to when we were talking to our local agricultural community, this is something that they had brought up. And that I think they're very much looking forward to and I'm excited about it.
Yes, Commissioner Libby, I totally agree, the comments were clear in the packet of support. From that community at least, and I agree it aligns a lot of things we heard, I hadn't realized that the. The other slaughterhouse in the county had burned this year, and so there's even further pressure on this, even more reason to make it happen sooner. My other comment was related to the, I guess, the the setback, the Adams County code that Alberto you mentioned. Was clearly guiding towards reducing nuisance impacts and odor. The land use code doesn't generally provide recommendations like that, it's a code, not a plan, right? But if there's some way to incorporate that in the text in your next revision, that might be a way to encourage people to move away from the boundaries, even if you don't restrict it.
Thank you for that, Commissioner Libby, if I may add also that, one of the provisions that we outline in this proposal is that all. Any activities associated with this use must meet any regulatory requirements from other agencies, that also includes local agencies such as Boulder County Public Health and therefore. They also have auto iterations that could help mitigate any potential. Nuisances regarding to odors, but particularly any animal byproducts and anything that could potentially go into the. The water table or the soil.
Commissioners, again, if I may, Hannah Hippely, Long Range Planning Manager. You know, in recognition of the questions about the setback, another thing we can do prior to the Board of County Commissioners is. Look at that issue and provide them with a greater depth of information and maybe some perspectives on. On on what different setbacks might look like on a variety of properties and provide them with some options.
Commissioner McMillan, the only thing I might add to the setback is that. I think it it becomes close when we're talking about. A setback from a property line as it's written right now. I I think maybe another way to think of it would be a setback from a structure. Or another space, because. You're twenty-five feet from a property line, but maybe the house is a quarter mile away and that's. Perhaps not an issue. I don't know if that solves the problem, that might just be another way to look at it.
Thank you.
So Commissioner Fitch.
Albert, one of the things I would suggest for this proposal as it goes forward to the commissioners would be to specify reevaluation of the actual number of units that are taken from the existing code of what 10 animal units translates into. It seems to me this is a a small first step. And depending upon the actual experience, once you start implementing these rules, it might be in fact easier to increase some of these numbers or to decrease the limitations per month to build in more flexibility. But I support the proposal as written, but I think there probably should be something in this instructions to staff more than to the commissioners that dislike the next item coming up probably needs to be reevaluated because there's, I mean, again, the actual equivalence of chickens to cows to pigs. It's got to be arbitrary. So let's make sure that we're going to build in some adaptation as we acquire more experience.
Thank you for the comments.
Any further discussion? Or any motions?
So regarding a motion, this is Commissioner Hilton. What, what do the other commissioners think about this setback concept? Like, are we intending to direct staff to just provide additional data to the county commissioners? Or are we requesting something else like an actual change to 5A to be either more detailed or to include some additional parameters?
This is Commissioner Libby. I like generally giving the guidance back to staff to revise or adjust for the county commissioners. The only, the thing I took away from the Adams County language that I like that we could suggest including would be the setback from other residences not on the property. But they have to make 100 foot setback from any other residential structure. I imagine not on the current property. But I'm happy to just put the record out there and ask them to revise and consider adjusting that.
Yeah, I don't, oh, sorry, go ahead, Leishen.
Yeah, this is Commissioner Gargano. I was just going to agree with Sam Libby. I think making the recommendation that they look at that, add that, and also the, I liked the idea of showing some example properties that are potential and just the example of what it would look like on those properties.
Okay.
Bloomfield, I agree.
You okay with that, Dan?
I am. I just will give staff the general comment that as it's written, I don't believe that we have enough detail here on 5A and would like some additional data to go to the county commissioners and potentially some additional limitations related to residents or an increase in the setback.
Okay, I'll make a motion then for okay with that. So I'm going to move that the planning commission recommend that the board of county commissioners approve land use code text amendment docket DC 200002. Accessory meat processing, meat and poultry processing with the comments related to setbacks revising or identifying the number of animal units. The timeframe for the limitation in months and any other comments that were in the record for this meeting.
Commissioner Bloomfield, one second.
And discussion? Okay, I'll move to the roll call. Mark Bloomfield.
I.
Sam Fitch.
Hi.
Sam Libby.
I.
Gavin McMillan.
I.
Dan Hilton.
I.
Leishen Gargano.
I.
Okay, the motion passes. Thank you. Thank you, Alberto.
Thank you very much.
All right, our next docket is, I know many people waiting for this. I appreciate your patience for the public. There'll be some presentations here and then we look forward to all of your comments. I appreciate your patience again. Docket DC-19-0005 lodging uses, short term dwelling rentals and bed and breakfasts. Staff ready to present?
Yes, let me just share my screen. All right, is everyone able to see that?
We're seeing the presenter view.
Oh, huh. Okay. This again. This is probably still wrong, but.
You can go to display settings and go to swap presenter and speaker, I think.
Oh.
If you're in the presentation.
Yep, I am. Great. Thanks for the tip. Did that work?
There you go, swap again. Looks good. Go for it.
Good now. Alrighty, there you go. Thanks for that tip. Okay, so Jasmine Rodenberg, Senior Planner with Community Planning and Permitting. And here to present docket DC 19-0005, the short term dwelling rental and bed and breakfast update. Here's just a brief timeline of where we've been and where we're going to. The Board of County Commissioners authorized us to proceed with these text amendments July of last year. And then last year, there was a survey sent out, a community meeting and some fire protection district meetings. Then the two individuals working on this docket update left the county. And so I picked it up with some of my colleagues and held some virtual meetings and in July of this year, and then referred out drafts and held a couple more meetings in August and September before heading here. So this is kind of a two part update, which I think you noticed in the staff report. So there are text amendments and then there is an associated licensing ordinance. And the planning commission has authority over the text amendments, but not the licensing ordinance. So that's a separate process for the licensing ordinance itself to get passed. But we're asking today that you recommend approval for the text amendments with the condition that the licensing ordinance get passed as well, because those two pieces really work together to regulate short term rentals. So the licensing ordinance will go to the Board of County Commissioners for a first reading November 12th, and that's a public meeting. So no testimony, public testimony. And then we're hoping to take everything to the Board of County Commissioners in early December so that we can implement everything in 2021. And we've received some public comments and questions about this, but we are considering a grace period for the implementation for both staff and the public to get used to the new rules. And then before I continue, as we work to center racial equity in our planning processes, I just want to acknowledge that in the virtual meetings that we held, we did not have a racially diverse group of people attending them. And we might not have heard from people who do not have access to or have minimal access to the internet, computers, smartphones and things like that. And those who traditionally are able to attend these kinds of public hearings and virtual meetings might not be representative of the entire community. But we did our best to keep that in mind as we moved through this update. So the first criteria for you all to review is that the existing text is in need of amendment. So why are we amending the code? The current regulations about short term rentals were adopted in 2008. And since then, the rental market has grown over 1,000%. And there's been a change in best practices for regulating short term rentals. As a statutory county, we've received new licensing authority from the state, so we can license short term rentals now. And we've adopted new housing and economic elements. And so this kind of goes along with those new elements. As you can see on the image there on the screen, that shows all of the short term rentals in unincorporated Boulder County as of last month. And so there's over 700 listings with a vast majority of those operating without having come through any approval process. So that demonstrates that we need to improve our enforcement mechanisms. So it's another goal of this code update. And then we also want to address housing and public needs. So research shows that short term rentals can impact housing stock and housing affordability. So we want to mitigate that. And we've also received consistent input from Boulder County residents that our current code doesn't adequately address the impacts of short term rentals. So like I mentioned, we have new housing and economics element in the Boulder County Comprehensive Plan. And so we drafted up some goals of this code update with that in mind. The economic element is on the screen, but effectively says that we value tourism, but want to provide those kinds of opportunities without placing an undue burden on the county's resources. And the new housing element talks about prioritizing preserving housing units for Boulder County residents and workers and their families. And specifically calls out short term rentals as something that need to be limited in that effort. So our three main goals in this update is one, and most importantly, to prevent the loss of housing stock and to increase housing affordability. Housing stock is a pretty easy way to figure out. Well, when you think about short term rentals, if there's a long term rental that's turned into a short term rental that takes that house off the market. And so it limits housing stock and that's already an issue in Boulder County. And then housing affordability can go one of two ways. So studies show that the property values increase and therefore price more people out in areas that are dense with short term rentals. But on the flip side, short term rentals might offer opportunities for people who can't afford to live in Boulder County subsidize the cost of buying a home and living in Boulder County. We want to balance the benefits and burdens of short term rentals on the community. There's a lot of positive benefits of these that go to the economics element. So it provides supplemental income, supports the local economy through tourism and jobs, increases tax revenue and builds community. But on the burdens side of things, it could negatively impact housing stock and affordability. Residential character like traffic, parking and noise, community safety such as wildfire, which is really important right now. And occupant safety, so the renters that come in, making sure that the building is safe and the septic is safe. And I do want to acknowledge that neighborhood character is going to come up a lot throughout this presentation. There's a lot of public comments about it as well. And when we think about neighborhood character, that was traditionally, it originated from a place of excluding quote unquote undesirable residents, which generally meant people who are racially or socioeconomically diverse. And so when we talk about impacts to neighborhood character here, it's the tangible traits of neighborhood character. So like traffic and parking and noise and septic and things like that. But not the intangible sense of neighborhood character, which can be informed by everyone's own individual biases, conscious or unconscious and mine included. So want to make that note. And we want to improve enforcement mechanisms. All right, so summary of the amendments. For the code update portion of this, we've split short term rentals into three separate types of uses. And bed and breakfast was already a principal lodging use and it's just being tweaked through this code update. There are two accessory residential uses, which would be allowed in all zoning districts. The primary dwelling short term rental, so that's if it's someone's primary residence. And that would just require a license, so no land use review process. A secondary dwelling short term rental, so that's someone's secondary residence that they're renting out. And that would require a limited impact special review or a limited impact special review waiver. And then two principal lodging uses. Vacation rental is short term rental. That's again someone's secondary dwelling. And that would require limited impact special review or special review. And then the bed and breakfast could be allowed through limited impact special review or a waiver or special review. And those two lodging uses are allowed in limited zoning districts. So then when we think about the licensing ordinance, which works in concert with the code update, a license is required for all short term and vacation rentals, so not bed and breakfasts. And the licensing regulations are where you'll see a lot of the effort to mitigate the burdens of short term and vacation rentals and where we have improved enforcement mechanisms. So here's a brief overview of the code update, and it includes some of the licensing ordinance pieces as well. So you'll see the accessory residential uses are the primary dwelling and secondary dwelling. And then the principal lodging uses, the vacation rental and bed and breakfast. So if we focus on the accessory residential uses for a minute, when figuring out how to develop this new code, we looked at the intensity of use and the potential impact on housing to determine what level of review process should be required. So for primary dwellings where it's someone's primary residence, we felt the intensity of use is relatively low. That's because it's already someone's primary home. They're there quite often, more than half the year, living there, keeping an eye on things. They have relationships with their neighbors and things like that. So we felt the intensity of use is low. The potential impact on housing is also low because it is already someone's primary dwelling. So we're not diminishing housing stock. And in fact, it could help people afford to be in that primary dwelling in the first place. And so as a result, we land at a low intensity of review process, meaning that we have no land use review process required. These applicants would simply just have to go get a license. And this would be allowed in all zoning districts, including platted subdivisions. So a secondary dwelling short term rental is someone's secondary dwelling that's rented out 60 days or fewer per year at a two night minimum. And the idea behind that was that we heard from the public that there's a lot of family cabins, seasonal cabins, or just second homes that people have and use a lot and only rent out not that often per year, just to help with upkeep, property taxes and things like that, or to keep the cabin in the family. And so the intensity of use here is moderate because it doesn't have the same oversight of it being someone's primary residence. And the potential impact on housing is also moderate. So it is a secondary dwelling, so it could take out housing stock. At the same time, these are more often going to be the seasonal cabins that might not be winterized, might not be a full time place to live anyway. And at 60 days per year, we didn't feel as though that that would bring in enough money to warrant people buying second homes just for this use. So we have a moderate intensity of review process, meaning that these will have to come in for a land use review process before getting a license. And that'll be a limited impact or a limited impact waiver in all zoning districts, including plotted subdivisions. So then we get to the principal lodging uses and these. And these are lodging uses, so they're not residential in character. And so we've determined that short-term rentals that are in someone's second home rented more than 60 nights per year, we're calling those vacation rentals, and those are a lodging use. It's a, it's a high intensity of use because it's not someone's primary residence. It's being rented out quite often throughout the year. And it has a high impact on housing because it would definitely take out housing stock. These are the kind of investment properties that you see, people buying or companies managing. So we have a gradation of review process for these with limited impact. If it's for places in business, commercial, light industrial, general industrial, or properties over five acres in the forestry ag, rural residential and mountain institutional. And we have the over five acre limitation there because we felt that properties that were over five acres are large enough to not have as many impacts on neighbors. There's plenty of parking space, space for people to spread out and things like that. Special use would be required for properties between one and five acres in the same zoning districts. And those are where there might be more impacts to neighbors and things like that. Vacation rentals would not be allowed in the zoning districts you see listed there. The rationale behind that is that, and also on properties that are less than one acre in the forestry ag, rural residential and mountain institutional. The rationale behind that is that we're trying to keep these vacation rentals, investment properties out of traditionally residential areas that where people are close together and homes are close together. And it's not allowed in platted subdivisions as well for that reason. Bed and breakfasts, kind of a moderate intensity of use, low potential impact on housing. And so we've, we have a gradation of review process for those as well. It's by right and business, commercial, light industrial and general industrial. And that's kind of to align with some of those other lodging uses that are similar to a bed and breakfast. And then limited impact if it's less than three rooms or six guests. And then special reviews if the applicant wanted more than three rooms or six guests. And it's not allowed in those zoning districts listed below. And if that is allowed in platted subdivisions, a difference between the bed and breakfasts and the other short-term rentals is that this can be in any facility. It doesn't have to be limited to a single-family dwelling unit. So a lot of these are the, the characteristics you see here are found in the licensing ordinance. So the primary dwelling short-term rental is the only one where the primary residence, it has to be the primary residence of the owner. A local manager will be required for all of these uses. And the local manager is someone who can be on the property 24/7 and within one hour in person of any issue. Bed and breakfasts serve a meal. That's a requirement. It's one of the differentiating factors between that and traditional short-term rentals. Number of booking parties allowed is one for all of the short-term rental uses, but multiple for bed and breakfasts. The occupancy limit is two adults per sleeping room with a maximum of eight or as limited by the septic size, which might be sized for less than eight people. So if the septic allowed for six, the max would be six. Bed and breakfasts, on the other hand, are as approved through the land use review process. There's no limitation on the number of days rented. And there's no code limitation, I guess, besides the secondary dwelling short-term rental. And that's because that was our way of differentiating the secondary dwelling between that and the vacation rental. So that's at 60 days. That doesn't mean that secondary dwellings will always be 60 days and vacation rentals will be, you know, who knows how many. That'll be determined through the land use review process. So it could be limited during that process. And there's no minimum night stay except for the secondary dwelling short-term rental. So we've received some referral comments. Public health wanted an indoor rate on gas testing to be required. The conservation easement program just asked that if an application was on a parcel with a conservation easement, that it would be referred out to them for review. Building provided a lot of clarifying comments on the licensing ordinance for the building safety and inspection portions and requested that energy audits be conducted for vacation rentals and helped clarify what rooms can be used as sleeping rooms for guests for more safety. The wildfire mitigation team provided a lot of comments on the wildfire mitigation requirements, making sure that it was an objective standard that both they as a team and the public would know. And they requested that outdoor fires only be allowed in firings, stoves, grills, or fireplaces provided for that purpose. And if there weren't any of those outside, then there could be no outdoor fires. The Lions Fire Protection District asked that all sleeping rooms have functional and approved egress windows and that an exit roof diagram be posted inside each sleeping room. And we received no comment or no conflict from a variety of H-Ways, community groups, fire protection districts, neighboring jurisdictions and other county agencies. Quick note on the survey results. Majority of people felt that short-term rentals should be allowed. There should be a local management requirement. There should be some form of owner occupancy or residency requirement and minimum stays were not appropriate. But this was not a representative sample of Boulder County, so we just kind of used that for informational purposes. So we received quite a few public comments. And I did my best to summarize them here. So before I get into the details of these comments, just again, want to point out, we heard from a variety of different groups of people, property managers, companies that regulate short-term rentals, people who currently have short-term rentals or want to do short-term rentals in the county. And if people opposed to short-term rentals, we might not have heard from people who could benefit by renting these out and currently don't live in Boulder County. Or we might not have heard from people who yeah, might be burdened by these because it takes out housing stock or housing affordability. So we received a lot of concerns about safety and neighborhood character, including congestion, parking, noise, wildfire, and the feeling of community. We worked on including a lot of things in our licensing ordinance to address parking noise and wildfire. There is a desire to require owner occupied short-term rentals and a local management contact. We've required a local management contact and owner occupied for the primary dwelling use. There were expressions of how short-term rentals help supplement income for retirement ag, property taxes and maintaining homes and family cabins. People discussed how they use short-term rentals to develop relationships with the renters and feel a positive cultural and community exchange in that way. And people talked about how short-term rentals provide economic benefits to the local community. There were desires to increase taxes on short-term rentals by collecting an occupancy or lodging tax or asking that these properties be taxed as commercial and not residential for the property taxing purposes. Boulder County does not collect a lodging tax, which is also called an occupancy tax. So those are kind of one in the same. And that's because there's very specific use for any tax funds that come in through that way. It basically has to be used to advertise the county for more tourism. And so as of right now, Boulder County doesn't have any intentions to collect a lodging tax for that narrow purpose. And we do collect local sales and use tax for these rentals. And but that's collected by the state on our behalf. And this update is not going to change how the Boulder County Assessors Office taxes these rentals as commercial or residential. That's just a separate process and the Boulder County Assessors take care of that and, and not this code update. There was concern about overregulation and there were desires to allow second homes to be used as short-term rentals because many individuals have family cabins or second homes that they use. So we found that the existing text was in need of amendment. It's not contrary to the intent and purpose of the code and it's in accordance with the Boulder County Comprehensive Plan. So we request that you recommend to the Board of County Commissioners approval of Docket DC 19005 with the one condition that the Board of County Commissioners can currently adopt the proposed short-term rental and vacation rental licensing ordinance because they work together. And that's it. So happy to answer any questions.
This is Commissioner Gargano. I had a point of clarification just because it came up in some of the comments. Just to go over, people were wondering if they were already approved for, for one of these uses before. How does an amendment like this affect those people?
Yeah. So yeah, I should have put that on the public comments because we got a lot of questions about that as well. So people who have come through and gotten approval to operate a short-term rental and they're operating within that approval, they won't have to come in for another land use review process, but they will have to come in and get a license and comply with the licensing ordinance. So they won't have to come in and get a new process, but they will have to get a license. Thank you.
This is Commissioner Lilibee. Thanks Jasmine. I want to get to the public comment. I've been waiting a long time. I had one question that I think will come up in public comments. Maybe you can speak to, which is the relationship between this and any changes or future changes to ADU allowances. I know that they're quite separate, but it'd be good if you can speak to how they're separated and maybe answer some questions before they're asked on that topic.
Yeah. So ADU, that conversation is definitely separate. It's something we heard from the public through this, the desire to allow ADUs to be used as long-term rentals to kind of also help with the housing stock and affordability issues in Boulder County. That would have to come through a separate text and code amendment. And through this, we're not allowing short-term dwelling rentals to happen in 80 years. So.
Just to be clear, there's, there's no additional restrictions in this text about that. It's just not addressing that topic and that'd be a different.
Correct.
I just hope to help some of the public with that, that topic. Any other questions right now?
Yeah, this is Commissioner Gargano, just clarifying. If you get AD, if you turn part of your home into an ADU, it's then it's only available for long-term, which is over 30 days at a time.
Yes, yes and no, a little bit. So ADUs, if you get them, they can only be used for three very specific purposes. It's as an agricultural ADU, a historic ADU and a family care unit. So those are the only three ways that someone can get an ADU in Boulder County currently. So yes, if, if someone wants an ADU, it can be used for one of those three things and that's it. So not just for a long-term rental and not for short-term rental.
This is Commissioner Blumfield. Is there anything on the calendar as far as the, you know, modifications to that, that ADU definition or process?
I am not sure about that. But maybe Hannah, if she knows, could, could chime in.
Thanks Jasmine. Hannah Hippely, Long Range Planning Manager. The accessory dwelling unit update is on our radar. It is not on our calendar at this time. The housing element to the comprehensive plan was recently adopted in implementing that through updates to perhaps the ADU regulations will, will be forthcoming. But at this point in time, I don't have it scheduled.
Any other questions at this time for staff? Let's move to comments. Okay. Hearing none. Okay. I'm going to go ahead and open up public testimony. I'll briefly cover some of the important topics. We do have a list of people who've signed up ahead of time, which we'll go through first. Anybody else is welcome to add their name in the chat or speak up afterwards. And we will be adding you and unmuting you as appropriately, as appropriate, and we'll help with that as you're called. There's three minutes per person. You can pull time with anybody else who's here to add to that time. And please refrain from adding comments or questions in the chat. Save those for your comments and public comment. And with that, we'll move into our listing of folks. Bobby Rothschild is first. I don't believe Bobby's here. He said his comments by email. We did receive them as he had to leave. Just giving him a second in case he called back in. And no, so we'll move to Samuel Arietti.
Hello, can you guys hear me?
Yes.
My name is Sam Arietti. My property is 275 Wagner Road, Allen's Park, 80510. I am a property owner in the Allen's Park area. I'm very opposed to the current proposal. I've actually written a five-page letter that's in the public comments, which I think has a lot of good points. Three minutes really is not enough time for me to go through in detail all the problems I see in this, in these proposed rules. So I'll just mention two in the interest of time. But I would want to say that as you get down into the details, there are many more things that pop out that, that are, that should be disliked. So the two items that I want to mention, first of all, Jasmine and others talked about problems raised by short-term rentals because of the use of the property, the intensity of the use. I just want to say that when you invite a guest onto your property for a short period of time, that person is residing in the property for that period of time. Therefore, there is no change in the use of that property. So it seems to me altogether inappropriate that the Land Use Commission would require property owners to submit to a special assessment, require permission from their neighbors and from the county in order to allow others to make residential use of their property. I think there is ample case law, if not in Colorado, then in other jurisdictions where exactly such, such types of restrictive measures have been, have been stricken down. And the other point I want to make is Jasmine and others throughout this process have said that the purpose of these rules, or one of the major purposes of them is to create affordable housing in unincorporated Boulder County by diminishing the property values. Therefore, and without question, if you're not able to rent your property, your, you know, the value of property in the unincorporated areas will go down. And the point here is normally when government takes action that diminishes property owners' value of their property, government has to compensate the property owners. Now normally it would be, it might be difficult to prove that the intention of these rules or any rule is to diminish property values. But here we have Jasmine and other planners on recorded Zoom calls that many of us have witnessed saying that the intended purpose of these rules is to devaluate property in unincorporated areas. If these rules became, become codified, without question, the next day someone will walk into a courthouse in Boulder, file a class action lawsuit on behalf of all the residents of the unincorporated areas. And there will be a very protracted litigation, expensive settlement that ultimately might have to be paid out by the county. I think that needs to be taken into consideration before anything like this gets passed. So just to summarize, and I've been on many of these calls. The vast majority of the people are against the rules. So I'd say these proposed rules are very unpopular. They've created a lot of stress and anxiety among people that are dealing with coronavirus.
Thank you, Sam, for your comments. And yes, your letter is in the record. Thank you for submitting it. Moving on to Debbie Brown.
I'm here. Can you hear me?
Yes, we can.
Okay. I'm wondering, can I pull my comments with Luanne Strom? I'm sorry. I think I would, I mean, yeah, Luanne Strom. She signed up, she's registered, she's on the, she's logged in, but didn't sign up to speak.
Yes.
My comments are going to go over like maybe a minute is all.
Yes.
Luanne, are you there? Can you, does she need to unmute herself?
I see she's been added, so I'll trust that she's here. Luanne, if you can unmute yourself, just you can share your address and then Debbie, you can share your address and get started.
Yeah, hi, this is Luanne. My address is 9517 Juniper Way in Arvada 8007. Thanks.
And then Debbie, your full name and address, and you'll have six minutes.
My name is Debbie Brown, B R O W N E. My address is 525 Spring Canyon Court, Fort Collins, Colorado. So thank you for the opportunity to comment. Thirty nine years ago, after my husband died in a plane crash, leaving me with a toddler and a baby. I purchased a mountain cabin in unincorporated Boulder County for a much needed retreat. A few years later, I remarried and. And as our family grew, the small cabin on the adjoining property came up for sale and it solved the problem of teenagers needing their own space. As well as overcrowded family reunions. Over the years, the two cabins have been the site of wonderful family gatherings and celebrations. Wedding rehearsal dinners and special coming together after the passing of loved ones. They are beloved places, special places that, like most of the cabins around us have been and will always be. In our family for generations to come. A decade or so ago, we were getting led, we started getting letters from Boulder County saying that the little cabin was, which was built in the 40s. Didn't have a permitted septic system and that we had to have one approved and permitted by the year 2023. So in 2018, we put in an approved system. Which cost us a total of $28,000. My husband and I are recently retired and can hardly afford that on top of of regular maintenance, utilities and tax expenses. So we rented out our little cabin for a time. For a week at a time when we weren't using it in the last two summers. We're registered, we have a license with the county and we've been paying the required lodging taxes to the state. As well as state and federal income taxes on the rental income. It's not cheap. We only rent out and use the cabin ourselves during the summer months because it's too difficult and costly to keep the road plowed and the cabins open the rest of the year. The rental income has helped a bit, but will still take, it'll still take us years to recoup the cost of the septic system that was mandated by the county. So we had planned to help by renting the main cabin a few weeks in the summer as well. But under this proposal, it appears we would be. It prohibited from doing that. Only one license is allowed, even if you qualify and can afford it. Under these proposed changes per person, no exceptions. We only recently found out about this proposal, which would have a significant effect on our lives. So this is our, really our first chance to, opportunity to comment, and that's kind of upsetting. But I'm here and we've watched the video of the. I watched the video of the September open house, so I had somewhat of a background and there are several issues I'd like to comment on. The number one reason given for limiting the number of licenses to one person is that it might reduce housing stock. That same reason is given for limiting the number of nights to 60 or even less. Potentially as determined by the director at the discretion of the director, I guess, under the short term rental designation. The argument for protecting the housing stock makes no sense for older mountain cabins like ours and most all of our neighbors who have. That have been in the family for years or even decades. These cabins are almost exclusively used in the summer months and are empty the rest of the year. They have never been and would never be used to provide long term rental housing. The second reason for restricting short term rentals is decreased. Decreased housing affordability. Here too, I cannot imagine how having a supplemental income during those times when your family cabin would otherwise sit empty. Would decrease affordability of all the other family owned cabins in our mountain communities. The third reason listed is that rentals would alter the rural character, including in. Increased traffic, parking and noise. Well, there's no difference between the activities that we, the owners or our guests engage in that could possibly affect the character of the area. There's no more traffic when we have guests. Because if they are staying there, we aren't. The same thing with parking. And regarding noise and parties, our guests who are paying to vacation in the Rocky Mountains come to hike, view the wildlife. Relax and enjoy the quiet. Beauty and splendor of the Rockies. I've enjoyed meeting every couple that has rented our place, even after a long day's drive, they nearly always arrive happy. They're all on vacation after all and are immediately awed by the breathtaking views. They are appreciative of us sharing our home with them and have always respected our rules and our place and treated our place as if it was theirs. Number four on the list, safety regarding wildlife. Wildfire and wildlife is always a concern in the mountain. And to that point, we agree with making the standard. Safety information from the county available to to renters. We also have no objection to the safety inspection. However, the specter of having to upgrade a cabin built in the 40s. To current building standard, building code standards. Is extremely onerous and would be prohibitive for most of us. I understand that the first three issues may be concerns in some areas where there are single family homes in unincorporated areas on the plains. Or near larger cities, but they just don't apply to our mountain communities. The idea that hundreds of folks who have owned their, and I've heard that some comments about this during that open house. That hundreds of folks who have owned their cabins for many years are suddenly going to sell them off to be bought up as investment properties by absentee landlords. Who don't care about maintaining them or the impact they might have on their neighbors is just ludicrous. Even that unlikely scenario could be avoided by giving consideration to how long the property has been owned. On the other hand, the wildlife and wildfire concerns do apply to our mountain. Is that six minutes?
That's the six minutes, Debbie. I'm sorry.
Oh, can I just say my last?
Sure, go ahead.
On the other hand, the wildlife concerns do apply to mountain communities and are less relevant to the rest of unincorporated bounty. And so for all those reasons, a one size fits all approach doesn't make sense. The proposed restrictions would create an extreme hardship. And impossible barriers to those of us who need the supplemental income. And simply want to continue to enjoy our special place in the mountains while occasionally sharing it with others. Thanks for letting me have the extra time.
Okay, thank you for your comment. Next is Benhard Strom.
Yes, can you hear me?
Yes.
It's Bernie Strom, address 375 County Road 113 North Allen's Park. A couple of preliminary notes. First, the primary reference sources in the staff report are all. From major metropolitan areas, New York, Los Angeles, New Orleans. And I would suggest that application to rural Boulder County, especially in the mountain areas, is quite a stretch. It argues that most of this material is neither relevant nor appropriate to Boulder County. Especially in the mountain areas. Also, reference to global short term growth of STRs as a threat to Boulder County is questionable at best. Growth curves tend to moderate over time, not continue indefinitely. For Boulder County in particular, approximately 700 units currently available for short term rental. Represent less than eight tenths of 1% for the housing stock. This small amount is unlikely to have very much effect on the overall housing availability or rental prices in the county. A few specifics. First, no distinction is made between front range prairies and mountain communities. Mountain communities have been primarily summer recreation properties for over a century. The ability to share these mountain cabins with short term renters is a win win proposition. Renters get an experience, get to experience the beauty of our mountains. And in turn, they help support the cost of maintaining and repairing these often older mountain properties. That suggests this type of mountain area should be, of use in mountain areas should be encouraged, not made necessarily more difficult and expensive. In this regard, it is concerning to note the table comparing the proposed regulations with those in effect. In other Colorado counties and communities. For almost every item noted, the proposed regulations would be more stringent than nearly every other jurisdiction. Further, the report itself says, and I quote, "Most jurisdictions do not regulate STRs based on maximum number of nights per year. Minimum night stays or total number of licenses." It goes on to say, and I quote again, "Planning best practices indicate that these types of provisions are unenforceable. And consequently, not worth including in the regulations. And yet, the proposed code changes would include such regulations. The proposed regulations will require a minimum of one acre for a property to qualify even to be considered for a STR. A one acre standard is arbitrary and counterproductive to maintaining and improving properties. In our case, we have approximately three quarters of an acre, but we are adjacent to hundreds of acres of national forest land. And separated by topography and or substantial distance from all of our neighbors. We aren't in a flat land front range subdivision community. Again, the distinction between mountain and prairie communities is relevant and should be taken into account. Then a couple of detail points. First, the 60 day limit for STRs is arbitrary and unjustified. For comparison, we have had occasional years when our. Property was occupied by family members for the entire summer. The only effect. I guess you don't get the rest of it.
Thank you. Thank you, Bernie, for your comments. Okay, next on the list is Patrick Commerford for three minutes.
My name is Pat Commerford and I live at 290 Tuhosa Park, South Road. And I'd really like to reiterate most of what's already been said. I. I mean, I seriously feel like this is an attempt to cram down property values by the government. I think this also. Does not take into account the highest and best use. These, these homes, as has been previously stated, many, many, many of these homes. Sit vacant most of the year. And if you want to eliminate the pressures of development, I mean, you walk, if you go through and see. You know, new houses being built, it just, it pains me to see that when you see all these homes that sit vacant. And a lot of these homes that are being built will only be occupied part time. And by allowing the short term rentals and not restricting the short term rentals. You get the highest and best use out of what has already been developed without putting pressure on more development out in the rural areas. I just, I wanted to put that out there and that's, I think everything else that I wanted to say has already been said. Thank you.
Okay, thank you for your comments. Next on the list is Nicholas Marialakis.
Can you hear me?
Yes.
Hi, my name is Nick Nicholas Marialakis. My property is 17762 Highway 7, Allen's Park, 80510. I would like to first thank the planning commission for this opportunity to discuss an easement issue. That's become a concern for me after purchasing my mountain property a few years ago. The initial decision to finally purchase this 20 acres was based on an updated easement agreement. That was recorded in 1996 with Boulder County. And was approved and notarized by all prospective parties named in the easement. This document clearly stated in paragraph two, and I quote. The easement granted hereby shall be used as a private residential driveway for ingress and egress to the prospective properties. And for no other purpose. The easement granted herein shall supersede and replace the previous easement. So this language was very compelling and assured me that the property owned by my other two neighbors would only be used for their ingress and egress to their home. And for no other purpose. However, shortly after acquiring this land, the neighbors living at the end of the easement road, Align Webbers. Applied and was approved for an Airbnb rental permit. I feel the permit granted by Boulder County actually violates. The updated easement agreement previously mentioned on file and severely reduces not only the value of my property. But also the solitude one would expect in a mountain, mountain retreat. Not knowing who's crossing your land on a weekly basis is unsettling, not only from a security and safety standpoint. But also a privacy issue. This Airbnb permit has altered the sense of mountain peace and quiet by changing what was intended to be a private residential retreat. Into a commercial rental property. That I believe tramples on the rights and expectations of others who own property along this easement road. Quite frankly, it's caused me to pause on plans to build on this land unless the permits revoked based on the. Recorded legal documents that were set forth prior to the approval of this permit. I would ask each of you, how would you feel that this was done to your mountain retreat property? Again, I thank you for your time and consideration with this matter.
Thank you, Nick. Next is Brian and Rosemary Donahue. Brian and Rosemary there? You have to unmute in the Zoom app if you are there.
This is Brian and Rosemary Donahue. Our address is 105 Wagner Road, Allen's Park, Colorado. I would like to plead to each of you commissioners to put this. On halt, on halt for now because this is being rammed through way too quickly. I can tell you personally that not everyone that is. Going to be affected by this has been notified by Boulder County and I think that's, I think that's grossly wrong. I have notified people and they have, and I have told Jasmine twice on two different meetings, the 10th of September and the 17th. The best way to notify all of the unincorporated property owners is the property tax rule that has yet to be done to today's date. So I'm asking as the commissioners that you put this on a, on a halt until further discussion can be met. And this, it's too late in the evening. We can lost some of the people that were going to be on this call with us. So a couple of quick points. This will cause economic damage to my husband and I as we're entering retirement. We spent the last three years on a second piece of property. The Torhosa Valley Land Office restoring it, it's now a Boulder County landmark. And now we're being limited to one license. I asked Jasmine specifically, is that legal? Can that be done? She was going to refer to the county attorney. We have yet to hear from Jasmine or the county attorney. At this point, I'm requesting to hear directly from the county attorney. This has been historical vacation rentals since the 1930s. And I'm an heir to one of the properties that has been renting property since the 1930s. There are situations that have not been explained in these meetings. There's a family member that wants to take care of their elderly parent and in order to do that, they have to rent. Part of their home to have the economic base to do that. I don't believe that a government agency can impose economic damage to me, my husband and our estate. I still don't understand the restriction of only one license when we pay two property taxes, we have two deeds. That's wrong. I don't know that that's legal as well. As far as any safety, I mean, I agree with what Sam, Debbie and Patrick have said. I want to reiterate what they've said. But as far as liability on my property, this is my property. I'm going to keep it safe for me to live in, for my grandchildren to live in. And I'm liable for anything that happens. And if it, if something happens on my property liability wise, then it's up to us and our liability insurance. Our homeowners insurance to take that. Boulder County is not liable for what goes on in my private property. I do feel it's unconstitutional to put these kind of just ridiculous restrictions on private property ownership. And there's way more to say on this. We've just, it's late in the day and we just have too many things to cover. So I am asking you once again. To limit moving this forward until there can be further discussion. And transparency and the people of unincorporated Boulder County that are property owners. Be properly notified in advance so that this is completely transparent for all of us. Because it has not been. I was knocked off the initial email stream back last, about a year ago when Christine and. And then I called Christine this fall when I heard it was still going on. I got transferred through Sean Ramble to Jasmine. And so I don't want to be knocked off the emails this time either, please. That's all I have to say. I want you to please reconsider.
This is Brian and I'd like to continue for the full six minutes. One of the interesting things I saw in it was that if if somebody owns two properties. That are in a sense back to back, same property line. That they're going to be looked at as one parcel. And I would like to have that explained. What is the reasoning behind looking at two?
looking at two properties that are paying two different property taxes as one parcel? And then also I'm interested in what, what forces are coming from places. Try to avoid using any names, but there's a lodge right up here near us that for years have, have said openly to us, they don't like what we're doing with short term rental because they have a hard time keeping their dozen cabins filled. And there's reasons why they're having a hard time keeping their cabins filled. And it's because they haven't stayed up with, with the needs of the, of the tourists and the, and the, and the needs that they look for in in, in coming here and they all want internet. They all want high speed. I don't understand that so much, but that's what we're hearing from the people that come, come and stay with us. Also, there is no place for a grandfather clause. We've been in this rental business, not full time, for thirty years. And I'd like to know why there is not any grandfather clause, which is common to the county's means and ways of dealing with with other issues that subdivisions before a certain date were grandfather clause in. And I'd like to know why. Thank you.
Thank you, Brian and Rosemary for your comments. Next on the list is Giovanni Reschiti.
Yes, good afternoon, everyone. My name is Giovanni Reschiti. I'm the managing partner of Berg Hill Greenlee from Reschiti. Seventeen twelve Pearl Street, Boulder, Colorado. We're the largest law firm in Boulder. And I represent a number of affected homeowners, including some of the people you've heard from already today. I'm not going to repeat what they have said. I want to focus a little bit on the law. We heard Ms. Rodenberg say that this change was not contrary to the intent and purpose of the Boulder County Use Code. We completely disagree. This ordinance and change will result in litigation. And I want to provide the commissioners and hopefully the Boulder County Attorney with two thoughts they should be thinking about. There are many more, but I only want to focus on two. And again, I'm speaking on behalf of a number of homeowners. First, the Ms. Rodenberg spoke to the neighborhood character element, which is very important. There is a leading case in Colorado. It's called the Houston case. That talks to short term rentals are deemed residential, not commercial. And if the neighborhood character has always been to permit rental properties, even in a residential context, that is not a violation and would be improper and contrary to the intent, purpose of the code to make a modification. Again, that's the Houston case. As we just heard from a number of speakers, these properties have been used for thirty plus years as short term rental properties. So this modification absolutely unquestionably, without a doubt, would change the purpose and intent of the code. The neighborhood character is what it has always been used as. And she talked about things like socioeconomic differences, but the normal historical use has been to allow short term rentals. That is uncontroversial. Second, we've heard a number of speakers, including Ms. Donahue, just speak recently about deprivation of economic benefit of property. Under US constitutional law, that's called a taking. And the government cannot affect a change that results in a deprivation, whether it be full or partial of the economic or beneficial use of property. That's exactly what this change does. It requires property owners to expend significant dollars, as Ms. Brown stated, to upgrade properties. And it results in an economic deprivation. My concern is, and we are evaluating it on behalf of my clients, is a, a claim as Mr. Ariati stated, on behalf of a number of owners, a class action for a taking, because that's what we believe this would result in. This, this one size fits all type approach can't work. It just cannot work. You have to recognize the historical uses. Each property is different and you can't subject everyone to one rule that does not work. So we would ask, and obviously as many speakers have said, can't make an argument in minutes. We would ask you to carefully reconsider any adoption of this proposal at this time. It's premature, has not been properly vetted. Thank you for your time. I'm happy to answer any questions on behalf of anybody. And if the county attorney wants to reach out to me. Again, Giovanni Reschiti, Berg Hill Greenlee from Reschiti. Thank you.
Thank you, Giovanni. Next for comment is Richard Harris.
Hi, I'm Dick Harris. I own property at seventeen six six three Highway seven in Allen's Park. My neighbors and I share a private road that bisects my property. And they rent their cabin using worldwide digital advertising with Airbnb. I am well acquainted with the problems caused by short term rentals. I've attended most of the meetings held by staff as they have drafted the code before you. They demonstrate good knowledge of the impact from short term rentals and have made major improvements compared with the present code. But there are very serious problems yet to be fixed. Much of the draft code has to do with safety. I quickly counted ten items, but note that allowing any fires is a terrible mistake. The code requires adequate parking, but only generally states a requirement for undefined satisfactory vehicle access. Why this is the case is mysterious. Boulder County has multimodal transportation standards that clearly require access roads be twelve feet wide plus a shoulder. For emergency vehicles, a turnout lane is required every four hundred feet. A grade of twelve percent is usually the maximum and is important, especially in the mountains. These requirements must be explicitly stated in the new code and compliance verified when a license is awarded. Why do we need these requirements? We have fires and large emergency vehicles. They must be able to access the site. Rentals are particularly dangerous as the clients may be unfamiliar with fire precautions in the mountains. We know about that from recent experience. Moreover, our altitude may cause serious emergency health problems for visitors who want to look at our beautiful scenery, but come from lower elevations and may not be in good physical condition. If a license is granted or renewed, county staff must be required to inspect the access roads to ensure that they meet these mandatory multimodal transportation standards. It, it's a wonderful improvement to have public reviews of rental licenses, but allowing waivers by the director offers too much leeway. Reasoning and decisions must be in writing, published and distributed to nearby neighbors in the public. Because many residents live elsewhere, time will be required to mail notices to them. At least a month should be required. As this new code is implemented, present licenses must be replaced quickly, especially for safety related matters. Grandfathering old licenses must be absolutely forbidden. The bottom line is that we don't want to welcome our visitors to dangerous situations, either to themselves or those of us who live here. Thank you.
Thank you for your comments. Next on the list is Phil Stern. You're on mute, Phil. We can't hear you, Phil, speaking. You have to unmute yourself in the Zoom meeting.
Can you hear me now?
Yes, go for it.
All right, Phil Stern. Box fifty six Allen's Park, full time resident. I don't rent anything. I'd say most of the people that I've heard from today, with a few exceptions, Dick Harris being one of them, doesn't rent anything. And the question is, what about when we talk about the subject of takings? The takings from us, those people that live here that often have to put up with strangers in our area that have no concept of what mountain living is about or how one deals with emergency issues with fire, with behavior, with noise. Noise echoes in these valleys. And these are the sort of disturbances that tend to emanate from facilities where the owner is not in primary residence. And as a result, I concur with the county's effort to adopt these regulations. They don't go as far as I would like them. And I've made numerous suggestions to Jasmine as to how to make them stronger. One of the areas is that truly there is a difference between the mountains and the plains in terms of how facilities are used. It's a very limited season here in the mountains and to say that the secondary use short term rentals could have sixty days, those sixty days are going to be in the summer, which means basically the entire summer. In many ways, it should be split over the course of a year or that number should be thirty. And if in fact it can be justified, it should be more than at the review process that can be ratcheted up. But in fact, it's now at a situation where when we say sixty, it's in the review process that it could be ratcheted down, but I suspect it never will be. That brings up then the whole issue of regulations and who enforces them. And I have to say that in perhaps the weak part of the county's efforts and your efforts in terms of conditioning applications is the fact that it still falls upon us homeowners who might be disturbed to complain about our neighbors. And that does not sit well with other neighbors. And the result of it is we have a very interesting circumstance that, that happens where it's difficult to become your enforcement mechanism. What is being proposed here and you're not dealing with the actual licensing agreement itself that the commissioners will agree with is the fact that the fees are probably not high enough to be able to pay for the additional people that are necessary to enforce something like this. The regulations are good, but the regulations are only as good as the enforcement that goes along with it. So in some sense, it's, it's a takings of my privacy. It's a takings of my rights as a non-renter. And I never fit into it. I listened to the planning commission earlier when you dealt with both reception and cows. They seem to get more notice than perhaps I as an individual homeowner. Thanks very much.
Thank you, Phil, for your comment. Next on the list is Sandy Nelson. Yes, we can. Thank you. Sandy, you're back on mute. We could hear you before.
I gotta hold it down and guess. Okay. I just have a couple of things I'd like to give the rest of the time back to Samuel, if that's possible.
Sandy, can you state your address for the record and your full name?
I, I live, I gave you a P O box. Is that enough?
That's enough, sure.
Okay, one ninety three. Low, I, I just, I disagree with absolutely everything Phil Stern has said to start with. Low income housing need is maybe was needed fifty years ago, but it's a whole different world up here now. Allen's Park is totally different than suburbs. They should be treated differently. I give the rest back to Samuel.
Thank you, Sandy, for your comment. We're not able to go back to a previous commenter as we didn't pull time at the time that that was made, it's my understanding at least. You're welcome to use the remainder of your three minutes, yes.
Everything that he said in his letter, I totally agree with, and I think everybody should read it. It's, it's public. And it, everybody should be thinking about all that. Thank you.
Thank you, Sandy. Next on the list is Annie Crane.
Commissioner Libby, Annie Crane was with us earlier. I'm no longer seeing her in the attendee list.
Okay. She's welcome to speak later after we've gone to the list. After Annie is Paul McKay.
I'm seeing the same situation.
Okay. All right, Alona Dodderer.
Bear with me one moment and I'll permit Ms. Dodderer. She's now with us. You can unmute yourself, Ms. Dodderer, whenever you're ready.
Okay, I'm unmuted.
We can hear you. Thank you. You can state your full address. Thank you.
Yes, Alona Dodderer. I own property at two eight nine Ski Road in Allen's Park. I am heartened that a lot of my other fellow Allen's Parkers are in attendance and making comments. I did submit a short, some short comments to you all. I don't know if you got them. And it seems to me that my comments kind of echo what everyone else has said. These, these regulations, I mean, for the most, I mean, first of all, I want to commend the staff on all their hard work on this. And they're reaching out to the community and I believe the community has responded. You know, in, in pretty much force, both people, mostly people in the mountains, but also some other people. I was on all of the meetings that they had, and I really appreciate staff reaching out and asking us for our, our ideas. It seems that most people kind of, there's this, these draft regulations kind of seem to be a solution in search of a problem. I'm kind of troubled by staff supporting these regulations by trying to control housing stock, reduce the, if you don't control short term rentals, you're going to reduce housing stock and you are going to decrease the affordability of homes. And I was really shocked to hear staff say that limiting the, the, the family cabin rentals to sixty days and a two night minimum will prevent buyers from purchasing these cabins just to rent them. I mean, it seems as if these regulations, for the most part, are based on supposition. There's not, I mean, is there a problem with, you know, people from LA coming in and buying these cabins and renting them? I don't think we're seeing that in Allen's Park. I'm, I want to focus on the, the family cabin issue because when the chart was presented at the beginning of this presentation, I noticed that this is the only category that has any limits on how, how often they can be rented. And I, I found that, that kind of surprising. At one of the meetings, the staff indicated that they want, that they're imposing those limits because they want to limit the land use impact of these cabins. And I believe someone who spoke before me said, you know, there is really no impact. People who come to these cabins enjoy them and like them as much as the owners do. So I would ask, I would ask the commission to ask, or the planning commission, yes, the members, to ask if staff could revisit that sixty day, two day minimum and maybe allow a waiver if the cabin, for example, has been upgraded, if it can be rented more than just in the summer. I just don't think you can impose these strict regulations without some kind of relief. And I would also ask the commissioners to read the rest of my comments, which include the, as the differences in the licensing fees, which also don't seem to be supported by any facts. And then the due process concern that says if you, if you consent to an inspection for short term rental purposes, you're also consenting to an inspection for any other purpose, which to me is a huge due process violation because you have no notice of what this inspector is going to find on your property when you've consented just to a short term. Thank you. I'm sorry.
Yeah, thank, thank you for your comments. I tried to let you finish. Appreciate your comments. Thank you.
Thank you.
Next on the list is Denise Donnelly. Denise, if you're with us, you'll have to unmute in Zoom before we can hear you.
Can you hear me now?
Yes, go for it.
Okay, thank you. Denise Dolly, four sixty six Logan Mill Road in Boulder. It is a residential foothills community. I currently live across the street from a, what would be considered your secondary dwelling under the new proposed codes. The owner does not live there. They have been running Airbnb short term rentals for more than two and a half years. When I became aware of it, it was having somebody drive out of my driveway. I live across the street. So if they miss the turn in on this property, they end up using my driveway and coming through to my house. As a single woman living alone, it, it is an issue of public safety to have this run this way. First, first thing I First, first thing I have is a question to you commissioners. You can do a raise of hands if you want. How many of you own a home and thought that in this universe, it's okay to have somebody set up a motel literally across the street or next to you? There's no standing in the community, no vested interest from these folks. It's just nothing but a money-making venture to them, okay? None of the codes that you currently have in place have been enforced. When I spoke to a code enforcer two and a half years ago, I was told all the hoops they would have to jump through. None of that happened. So now you're relying on us to enforce your codes. The proposed codes, nowhere in here do you have language about enforcement. How do you plan on enforcing these codes? Other speakers have said, well, do you expect me to go out with my phone and photograph that currently have an out-of-state vehicle parked in their driveway? Am I supposed to record that and count how many nights they're there and then call it in and hope that somebody shows up to do something about it? I mean, you can't have codes that you can't enforce. So that's the first thing. Second, there's an easy transition for either primary, secondary dwellings to move right to a bed and breakfast. Says you have to serve a meal. So what qualifies as that? You put out a bowl of fruit in the morning, you call that breakfast? So now you move into a bed and breakfast under the codes, which is a lot less restrictive. And also, I think that reviews have to be mandatory and also public comment. You can't fall into under any of these categories where you may or may not have to go through a permit or formal review process. That has to be in place. And also to speak to many people that spoke before me about seasonal cabins, I don't take issue with that. But when you set up, you're in a neighborhood, a residential neighborhood, whether it be on the flats or in the foothills. Let's call these short-term rentals what they are. They're motels. They're nothing more than motels. And that's just not good for the community. It's not good for public safety. I've had issues around public safety with this, this short-term rental, this motel that's being run across the street from me. And they could care less. They have actually no vested interest. So if somebody else wants my time, okay, thank you.
Thank you for your comments, Denise. Next would be Kyle and Meredith Leuk.
Sure, Libby, I'm no longer seeing Meredith and Kyle in attendance, but I do see one phone in listener. And if that person is those individuals, you'll need to press star nine to raise your hand to let us know that you'd like to speak.
Okay, pending that, are there any other folks who've joined the meeting who would like to speak who did not previously put their name down? Okay, hearing none and hearing nobody on the phone, I think we're ready to close public comment for this docket and move back into discussion and questions for staff. Thank you all to the public for your comments and interest in this issue.
This is Commissioner Gargano. I have a couple of questions. I could get us started, if that's okay. So, well. First off, for Jasmine, the two things that stood out to me were questions about, you know, multimodal and other access for vehicles, like how we check those roads and access. The other question that sounded, that came up was just how we notified people about this process. You just, I know you've mentioned us before, our notification process for things like this, but it'd be great if you could just review that again. And then also, when we think about these seasonal mountain properties, places like Allen's Park, which is where we heard from a lot, but there are many communities like this. What was your, your thinking there as far as them versus the rest of the county? As we obviously have a very diverse county when it comes to types of homes and topography. Sorry, three questions all at once.
That's okay. I think I got them all written down, but let me know if I miss one of them. So I'll start out with the legal access question. And I think something that's come up is a few people have brought up access easements that they say are limited for residential use, ingress and egress. And so when the county looks at legal access for a property, they simply see if there is like an easement in place that grants, you know, ingress and egress. And that satisfies the county for legal access. To the extent that there is discussion or disagreement about what that easement says, so whether or not a short-term rental is considered a residential use for ingress and egress or not, that is a private property dispute. So something that the county won't get involved in, but could be taken up by the two property owners themselves in court. So that's where we stand on that one. As far as notification, so there were a lot of different avenues for notification here. What we did is first and foremost, there's an email group. So for people who have signed up to receive code update notifications, that email group has been emailed consistently throughout this process. We sent out postcards and/or emailed everyone who either was an applicant for a short-term rental or a neighbor like within the the radius for that short-term rental application. So all of those folks have been notified. We also, for our virtual coffee with a planner, we held virtual coffee with a planner. So it was like a one-on-one that people could sign up for and virtual open houses. For those, we put posters up in multiple locations in Allen's Park, El Dorado Springs, Netherland, Niwot, Hygiene. So in those places, so we had physical posters where people could reach out to us. And then as people submitted comments, because they found this on the webpage, we've added them to an email group. So anytime there's been an update to this, they all have been notified as well. Yes, so that is a brief rundown of what, oh, and then the referral. I forgot about that. We referred this out to, I think, over 100 different agencies. So that included all of the HOAs, a variety of different community groups, which includes like three community groups in Allen's Park in particular. All of the fire protection districts, neighboring jurisdictions, things like that. We did as wide of a referral as we could for the community. Okay, and then the next question was about how we looked at the seasonal mountain cabins as compared to those on the plains. So truly, our creation of the secondary dwelling short-term rental category as an accessory residential use was our response to folks in the mountain community saying, hey, we have these cabin rentals or these mountain, like these family cabins in the mountains or a second home in the mountains and want to keep renting those out. So we created that category so that would be allowed in all zoning districts up to 60 nights at a two-night minimum. And that 60-night at a two-night minimum gives you 30 different parties. And the thought behind that was also in the mountains, there's a short season of rentals. So it will be only in the summer months. So our goal there was to allow this type of use where it wouldn't be allowed under the vacation rental, perhaps, but to allow this use, but make sure that we were also cognizant of the shorter season of rentals in the mountains. So it was kind of why we created that category.
I realize Jasmine didn't give you a chance to respond to any other comments from the public you'd like to respond to. Let's go ahead and do that.
Yeah, yeah.
That was my mistake. Go for it.
That's okay. I think some of that was addressed in Commissioner Gargano's question. So the first question, the first thing I want to highlight is that I think there's a misconception that we're going from no regulations of short-term rental to very extensive regulations of short-term rental. As you saw in the PowerPoint, there's, you know, over 700 rentals, but a vast majority of those have not come through our process to be approved. So I think there's a lot of folks out there who are renting homes that didn't realize that they had to come through a process already to be able to have a short-term rental use on their property. So our goal is to kind of take the current code and the current regulations that we have and streamline the process for some of those. And that would be our primary dwelling residential use will just require a license and not any land use review process, whereas now it would require a land use review process and then heightened review for others. So wanted to note that. And talking about enforcement, so we are planning to have active enforcement. And that's a difference from how the county regulates or enforces our current land use code, which is a complaint-based system. So our goal through this and kind of in the licensing ordinance is to have an active enforcement. And we will be looking at third-party vendors to kind of help us with that, that go through and scan all of the different webpages that advertise these types of rentals and see if people are complying with our regulations or not. So we really tried to draft this with an eye towards active enforcement and making sure that the regulations would be enforceable in some way. And I also, so want to take a moment to talk about, touching briefly on this takings issue, but also have perhaps Erica chime in if the commissioners have extra questions about this. But there's a non-conforming uses in Boulder County and in the land use code are contemplated. So if someone was renting out their property prior to there being any sort of short-term rental code, so probably prior to 2008, I don't think there is a code for short-term rentals in 2008. But if they've been renting their property as a short-term rental prior to there being any sort of code about that, and they haven't increased that use, so they've been just doing it the same way for the past 50 years or whatever, that would be considered a non-conforming use. And we're not trying to take away any of those uses. We would just simply require those folks to come in and get a license. So they can still operate as they have been operating as long as they don't expand the use. And they'd have to comply with the non-conforming use provisions in the land use code, but they would just need the additional requirement of a license. And then if people have come in since 2008 and have an approved short-term rental in that manner, same thing, they don't have to come in and go through a review process again. We won't be taking away that use. They just have to come in and get a license. So wanted to dispel some concern there. And
Sorry, in turn, oh, yep. Is, what does that do for people who have two mountain properties? And that they've been renting since before 2008, for example?
Right. If both of those mountain properties have, you know, qualify as a non-conforming use or they've come in through the review process and have a current permit to do a short-term rental, then they would be allowed to keep both as long as they didn't like expand or change that use. To the extent that they have expanded and they're no longer non-conforming, they would lose that ability and have to come in freshly, but yeah.
Hey, Jasmine, this is Commissioner Bloomfield. Just to, just to stay on that topic for a second. You know, if it's, when you say non-conforming use, and let's say we're talking over the last 20 years. As a family cabin, I'm imagining that maybe some years the family uses it a lot. And other years, maybe not as much, and so it gets rented out more. I mean, is there any kind of, is it, you know, a three-year average? Or like, how would you, how would you determine? And I guess the question would be, you know, would it, would it come down to, you know, well, we've rented it out for 70 days, so we get grandfathered into that? Or is it just, we've rented it out as much as possible for the last 30 years and we want to continue doing that?
Yeah, so I think that that would be evaluated on a case-by-case basis, which I know is not a super satisfactory answer, but it would really depend on the facts of the specific situation. So if someone can come in and show that they've rented it out consistently for the past, you know, 30 years at this average amount, that's something that the director would determine on a case-by-case basis.
Okay, thanks.
Okay, so let me just run through my notes. In terms of property values and housing stock and things like that, our goal is not to decrease property values. I think that'd be very difficult to do in Boulder County, but really our goal is to prevent the artificial inflation of property values that studies show short-term rentals can cause. So that's the goal there. I also want to clarify the scope of inspections because I don't want there to be a worry that through this licensing ordinance, you're opening up your home to be inspected for any and everything. The scope of the inspections is just as it's required under the licensing ordinance. Inspectors will go in and inspect it with the licensing ordinance in mind. And really, in that part about inspections in the licensing ordinance, we're talking about how that ordinance doesn't limit other inspections that could happen as allowed in other parts of the code. So for instance, if someone applied for a building permit and needed to, and the building inspectors needed to inspect the property because of that building permit, they would still be able to do so. It's not, yeah, so this licensing ordinance doesn't open you up to everything, but it doesn't limit the county's ability to inspect your property as it's allowed to under other parts of the code.
This is Commissioner Bloomfield again. And just to be clear, you had kind of said that primary residences are not required to do anything but get a license, but the license does include an inspection, right?
Yes, yes, exactly. So it's not a land use review process. They go straight to the licensing piece of it, which is a application and inspections and things like that.
And is that an inspection when you get the license or every time it's renewed?
It's every time it's renewed, which would be every two years.
Thank you.
And then I also do have, if the commissioners would like, a comparison chart of our regulations with all of the nearest jurisdictions who have also regulated this to kind of demonstrate that it's, we're not the strictest by any means, but we land somewhere kind of in the middle. And we took a lot of ideas from our neighboring jurisdictions and we've had conversations with them as well. So if the commissioners would like to see that, I also have that. But I think that's all for now. Yes, it's also in the packet.
Okay, this is Commissioner Libby. I'll start with a question that you kind of just touched on a few topics ago around limiting one license per owner. A lot of vacation properties or second homes in the mountains are owned through LLCs or trusts. Is the intent to limit to one individual or that satisfies as separate owners if they're on a separate legal entities?
It's one person and any of their associated legal entities, so.
Okay. Broad strokes. So it is intended to restrict that? Okay.
Yes.
This Commissioner Gargano, so when a couple owns two houses, is that still, because they're two people, but they are co-owners, I guess, they count. That's one owner.
Yeah, yeah. We did our best to take that into consideration when drafting it, just one. Yeah, yeah. So we couldn't have people trying to get around it the best we could.
One other topic that I'm concerned about is, and if you could just speak to this in more detail, is around the impact of the new land use process requirements for some of these applications that are implied. Basically, are you signing up to 100 submissions to the land use department, or sorry, planning and permitting to, that will then lead to significant delays in getting any of these through approvals? Because there are many of these that would have to go to the county commissioners for review and approval.
I, you might have to clarify your question a little bit for me. But so currently, anyone who wanted to do this, or a lot of people would have to come through a review process of some sort. So I think a lot of people are renting them out without having gone through that process. So there might be, you know, a lot of people coming in and asking to come in through a review process for this. So perhaps we might see an uptick in that. We anticipate the licensing part where is where we're going to see most traffic because everyone will have to have a license. And we're talking about that as staff and also will have some form of grace period to help both staff and the public. Go through this licensing process. Yeah, without getting penalized.
So right now there's currently no special use review for any, for that current application process?
The special use review is different, yes. And that's just for vacation rental and bed and breakfast, but that is different.
Other questions, comments, discussion?
Mr. McMillan, if I, if I could piggyback on that, that thread there a little bit, Mr. McMillan. I think one of the main differences that I think process wise folks, that this new ordinance would introduce process wise is those, those people that had secondary dwelling, short term rentals. Would come into this LU, LUW, and you'll have to help me, Jasmine, what, what does that stand for and for folks that are listening?
Just it stands for limited impact, um, special use review and limited impact special use review waiver.
Okay.
Yeah.
So right now. That, that's the same process really that folks should be going through if they were following the code today.
Correct.
And what we're saying is that in the future, if you live there. It's by right, you, you can do it, but it's. Your second home and you're doing it. Now there's this, this process, it's the same process you, that you would be going through. For the, the renting of your secondary home. And so my question is. Can you just describe that process a little bit? And I'm particularly interested in is the waiver part, which I assume is the director saying. Are we of the need for the process in this case? But maybe I'm wrong. How does that process work? The LU, LUW process?
Right. So. The waiver parts, okay, so the limited impact special use review process, there's a set of criteria in the land use code. So an application would come into the community planning and permitting for this use. And then staff would begin reviewing that application against the criteria in the land use code, the limited impact special use review criteria. And then once that review happened, staff would make a recommendation and that would go in front of the board of county commissioners. So. Kind of similar to what you review for special use. But it would, it wouldn't go to you for the limited impact. It would just go in front of the board of county commissioners. And then for the waiver part, so if the director determines that there's no significant. Conflicts with the criteria outlined in the code, there wouldn't have to be that public hearing part. So it wouldn't have to go in front of the board of county commissioners. It would be more of like an administrative review process. And so staff would issue a determination in that way administratively. But they would still review it against the criteria in the code and refer it out to adjacent property owners and agencies to make sure that there's no conflict and things like that.
So it's the same process without the hearing?
Yeah.
Okay. That's helpful. Thank you.
This is Commissioner Libby. I, I have another question about the wildfire partner certification. This is one of the requirements. I forget for which category you can remind me. There's a request requirement to go through a wildfire partner's certification. Is that universal across the plains and foothills and mountains, or is that only for certain properties?
That's only for the wildfire zone one, which is basically the mountains. And so not in the plains and. Wildfire certification will ultimately be required for all short term rental uses, primary, secondary and vacation rental. But with primary and secondary, the. They, the applicants just have to get the initial assessment done. And then they'll have two years to become certified. So there's kind of two years to do everything that needs to be done with the vacation rentals. The certification has to happen before rental is allowed.
Okay, thank you.
This is Commissioner Fitch. And I did have a question. I guess first. First of all, really to clarify why we wouldn't have an overlay district for Allen's Park or for the mountain areas in general. Because that really seems to be that area that has the most historic rental purposes or rental uses. What's the advantage really of trying to put everybody through the same process?
Yeah, so we did. Think about trying to see if it made sense for some of the mountain communities. To regulate them differently, but within those mountain communities, there's a lot of folks who are, have rented cabins. The. Mountain community itself has historically had seasonal cabins. But there's also a lot of folks who have moved into those areas in Allen's Park and things like that on a full time basis, because. Those are the more, more affordable places to live. So. It's kind of a little bit of a community in transition in that way. And I think we felt that the secondary dwelling, short term rental use. Being allowed everywhere. And forestry is where most of the mountain communities are. So vacation rentals will still be allowed in the forestry district. So we made sure to include those in, in the vacation rental. Categories or category. But we felt that those two categories kind of addressed. Those unique mountain communities sufficiently without the need of an, of an overlay district or. Or just pulling out Allen's Park or just pulling out, you know. Places outside of Netherland and things like that.
Commissioner Gargano, uh, if not an overlay, because I, my initial thought when I hear overlay as well, I've seen these places where, you know. Someone builds a brand new place versus these historic homes that are only open in the. Summer and not the winter where a brand new home would be a year round thing, like. An overlay feels like it would not fit our purpose, but to, to your point, maybe the his, not just historic use, but historic. Properties that are still seasonal. Was where my head was going as far as an exception or a slightly different. Rule, I don't know.
Yeah, yeah. I think staff has agreed generally that in, in overlay would, wouldn't really fit our needs here.
This is Commissioner Bloomfield. This may be getting into discussion, but. I'm, I'm wondering.
Mark, we can consider this discussion now.
Okay. I mean, it is still kind of a question for Jasmine. I'm, I'm, I'm looking through the actual code language change or amendments proposal and. Like, I'm wondering if there's a way, I, I see that you have. Where did that go? Under the bed and breakfast, you have additional provisions that historic accessory dwelling units are eligible for this use. I'm wondering if there's a way to put in either just, just a section that says. You know, things can be grandfathered in under nonconforming, or if you could say, you know, historically. Historic rental properties can, can be used more. I don't know, just to make it a little bit more explicit, I feel like. It, it maybe one of the things here is that. When you read through the code, you don't get the sense that. I mean, I don't think anybody until you mentioned it really knew that these things could be grandfathered in. And I'm wondering if there's a way to incorporate that into the actual code text. So that it just sort of heads off a lot of this discussion, it seems like.
Yeah, so I think. We would be hesitant to add something about how nonconforming use, like add something within the language of this code update about nonconforming uses, because there's already an entire section in the land use code. That discusses nonconforming uses. I think one thing maybe we could keep in mind would be. We'll have to have a licensing webpage for this. And so on that webpage, I think it would be important for us to clarify and talk about the nonconforming use. Aspect of this and. The other uses that are not nonconforming, but have come in through a process and are allowed, and I guess would become nonconforming, but. We would make that clear on the webpage and also talk about. Grace period on the webpage. So I think that might be a place where we could try to address all of this. Without confusing it in the code language itself.
Yeah, that makes, that makes sense. I mean, whatever, whatever path you think is best. Certainly having, you know, the layman's explanation of how this is going to work for most people. Having something in there, I think would be helpful.
Yeah, that will be, I agree. So we'll, we'll keep that in mind. Thank you.
The Commissioner Fitch. Jasmine, I think one recommendation that I would make is that seems like to me we need a whole. Probably a separate study session. Just on the question of how this will be enforced. I do take seriously the. Comments both written and delivered today. That if we have. Regulations that aren't going to be enforced or can't be enforced for lack of staff or. Lack of funding. Then de facto, those are ineffective and might as well not be written. It also seems to me that. This is going to be a learning process, much like the one with, that we just talked about accessory uses for. Farm properties. Where a lot of the numbers are probably pretty arbitrary. So why 60 and not 45? Why 60 and not 75? Do, again, do we differentiate the mountain areas where the season is very short from. Places like the Front Range unincorporated where the season is basically all year round. So I think there's going to be a learning process, both for the applicants and owners and neighbors involved. But I think, again, there are probably some things that. It would help mitigate some of the concerns if we particularly talked through how these things would be implemented. How these are going to be enforced and how those enforcement things. Allows some learning about what we should regulate, what we just can't regulate.
I can answer a little bit about the enforcement piece because we have had conversations with two. Different groups that do and help different jurisdictions enforce these regulations. And we've talked to them about. What can we write that's enforceable and what can we write that's not enforceable? And we have looked at our regulations with that lens on. So one thing that these third party groups do is that they scan all of the different platforms. Flipkey, Airbnb, VRBO, things like that. And we have requirements that people advertise their license number. And different things like that. So they can scan them all. First to see, do they even have a license? And second, they can scan them to see, are they advertising them appropriately? And then through that software help, you know, send out violation notices and things like that. So. And when thinking about the cost of something like that, we don't have a cost or a fee right now in our licensing ordinance. It's going to be adopted separately, but. When we adopt that fee schedule, we'll make sure to keep in mind, will it cover the costs of enforcement? So that's definitely something that we. We want to make sure that we cover through this and the fines as well. So not everyone that. Will be renting without a license can get a license and therefore we'd recover the fee, but we could find them and recover the cost that way. And I just also really quickly want to mention, because my colleagues sent me this note and I think it's helpful. Allen's Park can become its own rural community district if they so choose. There's a path through the code to do that. And I think. They're even looking at that. And in that way, Allen's Park could create their own. Kind of rules and regulations about short term rentals. So. Yeah, that option is available for that community.
This is Commissioner Gargano. That was, I kept thinking, doesn't Eldora have that?
I don't know if Eldora has it, but like there's the Niwot Rural Community District, for instance, so. So I can tell you real.
I was thinking Eldora had their own rules on rental, rentals or not, or.
I don't think so. It's just Niwot that has the rural community district right now.
This is Commissioner Libby. I, I had a couple of specific areas where I guess I share some concerns raised by the public. I wanted to ask for some more detail. One, Sam already just touched on, which is the 60 night maximum for rentals. In, in the staff report on page nine, there's a, a statement that. Basically your work with other, other companies to help with this kind of thing is shown that it's very hard or impossible to enforce that. And that based on all of the other jurisdictions not enforcing that. Planning best practices indicate that these types of provisions are unenforceable and consequently not worth including regulations. So that to me is an argument that that should be reconsidered. I think one of the reasons it exists, from what you said. Was a way to differentiate that second category of rentals. But it seems to me that there is a lot of. Difference between 60 and even doubling that to 120 that would allay a lot of concerns for people in the mountain communities where there's not. 355 days of rentals, really, it's only a few, a few months of the year. So that's one area I think for some flexibility or increase might be appreciated by that community to think about. I don't have an answer to what the number should be, but that's one concern area that I had. The other was the 30 day limit in terms of length of rental across, I think, multiple of these categories. So I. I'd like to hear the, the reasoning for that, because to me it seems like if the interest is in reducing the amount of churn and changes of people and different people coming in and. Some concerns residents have shared, that allowing for multi-month rentals would be perfectly fine or would even help with that. So why is there a 30 day limit implied in there?
I'll address that second question first, because that's a quicker answer, but. Rentals over 30 days, so like more than one month are by right allowed in the code. So. People can do a three month rental. They don't have to come in for any process. So, yeah, so it's already allowed. Yeah. And, and that does bring up a good point because I think. There's this idea that if you're not allowed to do a short term rental, you're kind of left high and dry and you don't have any options for renting out your property. That's not the case. You can still rent out your property for like 31 days at a time or two months at a time. So there's still that option for folks. Without any sort of, it's just a by right use.
Could that exceed 60 days?
Yeah, I mean, it could be, yeah, people could rent it for six months.
So the 60 day limit is cumulative short term rentals?
Yes, yes, correct. Yeah. Yeah.
It requires a pretty nuanced reading and understanding of the code. And I think that's where a number of folks are getting confused by this, including myself.
Yes, yes. And I think another point that we will definitely put on the web pages, like anything more than, you know, 31 days at a time, a month.
Great.
That is a by right use, because I know City of Boulder that you, people have to get a license even for that use, but something that's different for us.
Commissioner Gargano, yeah, I think making it really clear to people that. Yeah, you could do 60 days of short term and then you could do a 30 day. You know, whatever, long term and get a 90 days worth of rental payment.
Right, right, correct.
Financially, that might make people much happier.
Right. That is true. That is true. And I think, so in terms of the 60 days. Yeah. Definitely could use your input on that. It's a little difficult because it is true that best practices say, you know, it's really hard to enforce. And a limit like that, if it's 60 days, 180 days, because. You basically have to request from one platform or multiple platforms, the records of the renting and that's like, it's just really hard and cumbersome. At the same time, we created that category to try to address. People who have those seasonal cabins and want to rent them out. And if, if we didn't have that limitation, it would just become the vacation rental category. So that's, that's kind of. So that's, that's kind of why we landed there. I think the sixty days was just at a two night minimum. Our thought was. That becomes thirty different parties and thirty different parties in the mountains. Over just a three month period kind of felt right to us. We also looked at, if you see in the packet, there's the average nightly rate. For rentals in unincorporated Boulder County, and I think it's about a hundred and seventy something dollars and. We multiplied that out by sixty and I think it's about ten thousand a year or so. And so we kind of were looking at that and trying to make sure that that number wasn't high enough that people would just go in and buy a bunch of investment properties to be able to get that use. At around ten thousand a year. I mean, it can cover property taxes, which are on average two thousand ish and. A little extra too, but. That was the extent of how we came to that number.
Okay, thank you.
Yeah.
Yeah, I understand. It's a, it's trying to walk a fine line in the middle there. I guess one scenario that I'm a little concerned about is. It's a good mention that there's the fallback of just doing a vacation rental if you want to rent for more days than that. Except if your property is under one acre, in which case you're not allowed to do a vacation rental. So if you maybe also speak to that size. Baseline or floor. You said earlier was about kind of keeping neighborhoods from becoming all rentals that are small properties, but what else can you say about that?
Yeah, so really our goal there was. To prevent, you know, a lodging uses in more like residence residential areas because that's where we have the biggest concern. And the other thing is smaller properties are tend to be more affordable. So like those are the ones of the vacation rentals. That we have the highest concern with housing stock. So properties less than one acre are going to be cheaper than properties. More than one acre. And so those would be the ones where we would have the highest concern. And I think the other thought too is that vacation rentals generally. Some jurisdictions like the city of Boulder, I think, for instance, just doesn't allow this type of rental at all, like no one can have. A secondary dwelling being used. Because of their concerns with this. So. It was kind of our, our attempt to minimize the areas where vacation rentals could be allowed to those. Parcels that we felt would have the smallest land use and housing stock impact.
This is Commissioner Bloomfield. Just to be clear, like there's the one gentleman who said, well. You know, I've been renting my place out for years and it's three quarters of an acre. So that would also be. Grandfathered in under nonconforming use?
Yeah, perhaps. I mean, if he.
Yeah.
Yeah, yeah, but yes, if he's done it appropriately, there's potential there. Yeah.
This is Commissioner Gargano. For those properties that maybe are under an acre because of. And there's like weird topography, but it's not a neighborhood. They're not, you know, they're very, they're more than an acre away from the next property. I don't know. I'm trying to understand that more.
Yeah, I mean, I think that that. We're getting down into the, those difficult choices where staff just landed at the, the one acres, so as not to make it so confusingly. Less than one acre, but more than an acre away from different parcels or something like that. I think. I think reasonable minds can definitely differ on, on how that's written and. To get at the same end goals. So this is just our, our current proposal, but. Open to thoughts and suggestions on that as well.
Commissioner McMillan, I think. You're hitting on one of the challenges of all this is oftentimes you don't know. Until you try to enact it and then you run into problems or. Consistent things coming up over and over again. So one question I have with regards to that is what is the process? For someone who wants to perhaps ask for an exception to that rule, like they have three quarters of an acre. They don't have an acre, but they maybe have a good case to have a vacation rental because they're. Not in the neighborhood like you suggest. How, how do they, how would they do that in, in the current code? In this proposal?
That I, I'm not sure if they would be able to do it at all. It would just be prohibited. There's no. No way around. Yeah. I mean, if they're less than an acre. Then they wouldn't be allowed as a use.
Got it.
Those would not be able to go through a variance process?
No, they would not be able to.
That's, that's because I assume that it's, it's a use question as opposed to a. Setback question or something that I think I want words in your mouth, but. I think that's something. That I would. See where we go with discussion here, but I, I think that there ought to be a process for that because I think we're going to run into a lot of like one offs that. No one anticipated, just given the breadth and vastness of the county and all the different situations that are out there. We're going to have things that seem to make sense, but the code won't permit. So I would suggest that. My thought also, and this is sort of a one structural question with me, and I agree with a lot of the other things that have been brought up. But. One thing that I think would make sense specifically for the secondary dwelling. Short term rentals is to, I think you want to encourage people to come in and get these permits. And if. If I know that there's a lengthy process and a. County commissioner hearing at the end of that process and it's going to take a while. You know, I might just roll the dice and see if I get caught. I think the goal of this is, is really like I said, to, to, to bring people in and make it easy for them. And so I think there should be perhaps an administrative way to get that, to get that done. I like what you've laid out for the most part, and I'm specifically speaking of secondary dwellings here. For someone to come in and there's a checklist and whether it's the planning director. Or someone else can say, yep, you meet all the requirements. Here are the rules. And you're approved. It's a little bit different than a by right. Situation was just what you have for the primary dwelling. But for secondary dwelling people to be like, just it, it, it puts a process in place to say, hey, we're licensed now. And we don't have to go through a long hearing, but now we've been presented with the rules and. We're going to go abide by them. But I just think we should try and make it easy for folks. That's my opinion on that. And one thing that I would push for in, in a motion that we make here today. Thanks.
So Commissioner Fitch, again, one way of doing that, Gavin, would actually be to try to make. Specifically for the secondary residents. To make the first application for that. An administrative process rather than all of the other kinds of requirements. I think for renewals, you probably going to want to, you are going to want to have a notice process and a process where. At least in cases where violations have been, have been reported, have been. Evaluated. That on renewal, that's one of your enforcement tools is to say, no, you have. Been permitting people to rent. This is a party house and drunken brawls, et cetera. We're not going to renew your permit. So. But again, you can, you could design a transition process that says. Especially for those things that are out there, the majority of which are currently illegal. Let's facilitate them getting into the system by making it as. Easier process if they meet the requirements and if they get the licenses. And then make it tougher. Once we have some experience about what we can enforce and what we can't.
I think I'd like to just add like, or just ask for some more clarification on that. So we have good direction. So for the secondary dwelling category. Currently we have the limited impact special use review waiver process, which would be administrative, although it requires people to come in through the. Apply for a limited impact special use review. So it's very similar to SU, but just for the Board of County Commissioners. So we have that process, but it does require. Kind of an application and administrative review. So there's that ability. And then there is just like the primary dwelling rental, which they don't come in for a review process. It's by right and they just go in and get a license. So you're asking for either one that all the secondary dwelling is kind of do that administrative limited impact special use review waiver or something. Just a new process that we kind of create for this category that's administrative.
I'll, I'll speak for myself and I don't know how the other commissioners feel. I, I don't know. I don't really, I don't know the extent of the, of the waiver process. I would defer to you and, and your, your team to. Think of the best process. I think I just want to, the goal to be that it's something that unless there's something like. That they can't achieve, like there's something really extraordinary that you feel like needs to kick it into a full blown hearing. I think that the fault should be that it's an administrative process. Whereas I think you have it set up right now that. The way I read it, it reads, you may issue a waiver, but. The default is it's going to go. All the way to the county commissioners for the hearing. And I guess I would flip that a little bit.
Okay, I understand.
Yeah, my comment about this, Commissioner Libby, would just be that it's, it's about communications and kind of guidance. Like you said, a website needs to be set up to get people through this. I think assisting with helping. People understand how they can submit for the easiest option for themselves. And provide all the information that will get them towards a waiver ideally. That's the most impactful thing that can be done to reduce the burden on the public and on, on staff. The process is there and we, you've made your recommendation of what you can do. But if you don't know what the acronyms LU slash LUW mean, which nobody does. We need some guidance on how to keep it easy for yourself, if you're a homeowner or on a secondary home.
So I did have one more comment. Regarding. The, the licensing draft. Requires. Publicly posting. A notice that the neighbors can see as well as the. Renters can see that this is a rental process. And there was some concern about that, that advertises to anyone who's cruising through the neighborhood that this property is not. Occupied all the time. So I, I think that, that. Requirement about notifying the neighbors ought to be handled probably in some way than. That would be different. From posting the sign. I actually happen to live. Next door to someone has a basement Airbnb. It has been absolutely problem free. We mostly don't know when there's somebody there or not there. So I. I think these things can be done well. And the question is, how do you respond to the cases? Where they're not being managed by the owner or not strictly managed by a manager. That you can identify the small number of bad apples in the bushel. And take appropriate action for them. And to make it clear, we're not just inventing things for. The sake of regulating everybody and forcing them to do something different from what they've done in the past. And also say that I, I think staff really did do a. Remarkable job of public engagement on an issue about which obviously if you read all the comments. People have some pretty strong feelings. But there are also are really diverse situations all across the county that. At the site specific level. Very difficult to figure out how, what would be appropriate for every single one of them. And we draw the line. So that's why I'm saying again. Building in review of how these things have worked is, it's a pretty important part of the process.
I had two other smaller areas that I remember. It's Jasmine, this Commissioner Libby. One around the limited number of guests to eight or the limit to the septic system that's approved. I would imagine that there are properties that will fall within this. Licensing guideline that are quite large houses that already offer more than eight guests and will now be restricted to that. Is that accurate?
That might be the case. So the current code. Is also maxed at eight unless people asked for special approval from Dale as the director to get up to ten. So I think ten would kind of be what people would have and then they'd have to come down to eight.
Okay, so there's probably just people list overlisting houses and there's no enforcement. So it's just happening. Okay. Another topic was something that I think a couple of raised in comments was around. Things like, like not allowing a wedding at a rental property. I'm just interested in, it seems like that's a specific call out of an event type where. Currently at your home, you can host a wedding of some size by rights. I'm sure there are limits on that in the code. It seemed like a very specific thing to call out that. In this era of quite small weddings this year, I'm a little concerned about limiting that, I guess.
So those by right events would still be allowed. So this is just people can't. Use, you know, advertise their. Short term rental as a wedding venue effectively. That would be a separate use and people would have to come in for like a permit for that kind of use. So it's just. An approval of a short term rental use doesn't automatically get you the ability to host. Weddings outside of those by right ones that you have as your property owner. People would have to come in separately for that.
I, I think this is an example of where there's quite a few things where this relates to by right. And how it compares to by right uses that not everyone understandably can be fully familiar with. And it, it seems to imply it's restricting something where really it's not, it's saying the current code applies. We're not extending the code. So as, as you go forward, I just would say, if there's any way we can. Again, highlight to the website, communications to people. There's probably half a dozen things that have come up that the public was extremely concerned about that actually aren't being limited by this. It's just. Either how the code gets written, which is a style and legal structure, but. Communication around that will help with some of those concerns. Is anyone, since we're in discussion now, has anybody largely concerned about moving this forward as is with all the comments we've shared?
This is Commissioner Gargano. I feel like we've given Jasmine some really good directions and things to look at. So with that, I'm feeling good.
Commissioner Bloomfield, yeah, I feel pretty good about it. I think the only, the only question really is the. You know, the sixty days and how is that enforced and. That sort of thing.
Yeah, I'm pretty comfortable moving forward. I assume many of these same. Comments will come up in the Board of County Commissioners hearing, if not more. My only, I guess, comment on that is that hopefully we added, added some detail to those that might help with some concerns in our discussion. And if there are people in public still listening that you. Try to make recommendations around the proposed code, not. In opposition to the entirety of the process. There are lots of individual things here that can be sharpened and improved as we've talked about, but. Overall opposition is not very productive in this focused process, in my opinion.
Commissioner Gargano, yeah, to your point, Sam, the, the fact that so much of this stuff, it's in place and we are. We're altering something that exists, not creating something brand new to that point. Yeah. But I do think some of the direction we gave on making that a little more obvious to the public might help.
Commissioner McMillan. Jasmine, I, I feel like we've given you a lot of feedback and I, I think we're trying to, if I'm reading everyone correctly here, trying to figure out how to wrap up. And I, I see you have a recommended motion that we recommend approval. And so my question to you and all my fellow commissioners is. I, I think I would be ready to make that motion, but. And I would probably do a contingent upon incorporating the things that we've. and I would probably do a contingent upon incorporating the things that we've talked about thus far. Is that structurally going to be okay for you moving forward? Or do you, do you want us to put a finer point on what, what we think should be addressed um for the commissioners?
Um, I might ask Erica if it needs to be more detailed. I think the main notes I have that might be helpful for you to just lay out in your motion is this uh look into perhaps a variance um ability for these. Consider the administrative for the secondary dwelling category, making that more of a priority. Building in perhaps some sort of review after these get implemented. So we know, you know, has it worked? Has it not worked? So something like that. And then overall, making sure we have mechanisms in place for communicating to the public. How we're changing it, if things are being changed or not grandfathering all of those things, but just making communication to the public clear. Those are kind of the concrete items that I listed down, um, as well as looking at the 60 day limitation on the secondary dwelling and seeing um if that's appropriate or should be changed. So those are the main ones I hit. And if I'm missing something, please let me know. And Erica popped on, so maybe she has something too.
Oh, this is Erica Boulder, Erica Rogers, Assistant County Attorney. I didn't have anything to add to this, but I just wanted to say that if there were things to add, we can just be very specific and add them to that list. That would be helpful.
This is Commissioner Libby. Gavin, what I, what I heard mostly was not us having any specific recommendations on the code text. Most of these comments were, are, are additional surrounding guidance. I think what's being requested is that we move the text amendment forward as is or with specific questions or, or amendments suggested. And the, the comments are all part of the process of implementation and how this works, if my take at least.
I, I agree with you with the exception on a couple of items, one being the 60 day limitation. You like, that's hardcoded in there if we had a recommendation. And then the other one that came up is a, a minimum one acre. Which we discussed, I don't know that there's consensus among all of us.
This is Commissioner Gargano. I was, I thought Jasmine included that kind of in her point about looking at those um.
Yeah, variances.
Yeah, the variances.
Okay. I mean, I, I um, you know, alternatively, we can say, for example, I know we think 90 days is appropriate, but if we don't have a consensus among the commissioners on that item. And then we're basically just saying we have question with it and do some more research and maybe revise your, and I'm okay with that. I just want to make sure that's what everybody here is, is on the same page with that.
Yeah, this is Commissioner Gargano. I would not like to uh offer a different amount of days because to me, 60 days sounded okay. And when I think about the neighbors that are, that are concerned about this happening too much, the idea of increasing the number without really understanding the why and looking into the number being appropriate. So I'd rather trust um staff to look into that appropriate number.
I, I would be ready to make a motion, but I want to make sure that, that um, here's the things on our list. I'll just try to restate them. Further examine the one acre minimum, um, the 60 day limitation. Establish, look into establishing a variance process. Consider an administrative process for the secondary dwelling. Please build in a review process after this, whatever gets implemented, gets implemented and we revisit within a year. And um that we um strive to improve on the, the mechanisms or the um communication with the public about what is currently in place and what would change with this new ordinance.
Is there, this, this commissioner, I just have one clarification Gavin. I think just to be clear that we're suggesting that we, that they look into reducing this, the minimum size for a vacation lot, right? The one acre concern is that it might be too big.
Or that they look into variances.
Or variances for that. Yeah.
Not necessarily fully expanding it blanket.
Yeah, yeah.
Maybe variance.
I think we should have that, that, that some, somewhere in the motion should be smaller, not bigger, right?
Yeah, good, good clarification. Thank you.
So the, the variant suggestion, this is Commissioner Hilton, the variant suggestion is uh sort of across the board. It's not for a specific um category.
That's how I, that's how I thought it was.
I would agree with that.
Yeah.
Yeah. Um, if I might ask a question on the variance, sorry, Hannah Hippoly, Long Range Planning Manager. The land use code as it's written does not allow a use variance. So our normal variance procedures go to the board of adjustment. So maybe we can get some better direction from planning commission about what you mean by a variance.
This is Commissioner Gargano. Yeah, I don't know that maybe variance is not the correct word to be using. Um, we're looking for a mechanism in which someone with less than an acre can still pursue short term rental.
For example, there are some very small lots up in the mountains in the middle of nowhere that are under an acre that could request this somehow, which they can't in the current code.
Maybe waivers is the proper word or something other than variance.
Yes, Commissioner Fitch, seems like to me what we're looking for is an appeals process that would say uh if I got turned down uh on the administrator process in particular, uh, I would have a place, a procedural place to go to try to make my case to somebody other than the director and that could be coming to planning commission, could be going to the board of county, county commissioners. So or, or really arguing that uh again, you could meet the spirit and the goals. Even though you might not meet every single criteria. So it might look like a variance, but I'm not sure the board of county commissioners is going to want to dump all this this many decisions on the board of adjustment.
Yeah. So I think uh calling it an appeals process might be difficult. We do have a, an appeals process built in, but that would be appealing just based on the criteria and the criteria would be limiting to one acre. So you couldn't, there's no way to get around, like you wouldn't be able to win that appeal. But I think what I'm hearing from you all um is something, not necessarily our formal variance process, which isn't allowed for something like this, but an exception or a waiver of some sort to be able to do this use. Um, and if they were denied that, then that could also be appealed. It would get caught into our appeal um process as well. So I think that's, that's
I think the spirit is clear to you. Yeah.
Good.
So Gavin, that sounds good to me. The list you had is your editing over there.
I am, I'm drawing it up. Is there, before I, uh, is there anything else that anyone would like to draw on, on this list before I make the motion? Okay, um, hearing none. Bear with me and I'll take a crack at it here.
So sorry, Gavin, one comment before you saw that the piece about being contingent on the like licensing process being passed. There's a, in the recommendation, you have to make like a two part motion.
Yeah, I'm, I'm headed to the recommended language right now. So I'll try to quote it here. Um, one moment. Okay. Uh, I move that the planning commission recommended the board of county commissioners approval of docket DC dash 19 dash 005 short term dwelling rental and bed and breakfast update and adoption of the proposed tax amendments with the following condition that the board of county commissioners concurrently adopts the proposed short term rental and vacation rental licensing ordinance. And an additional condition to direct staff and the board of county, county commissioners to look into the following items that were discussed at the planning commission hearing tonight. Number one, uh, looking into reducing the minimum acreage below the one acre minimum uh in, in certain um uses to consider increasing the 60 day limitation in the second uh second home category. The establishment of a waiver or other process to ask for an exception to uh these regulations. Um, to consider an administrative process um for the secondary dwelling uh use type. To consider and build in a review um of the efficacy of this ordinance after it gets implemented sometime in the future, perhaps annually. And also to um improve the mechanisms in place for communicating to the public to demonstrate and, and show what the current regulations are and what will be changing uh with the implementation of this new ordinance. That's all I have.
Commissioner Fitch, I'll second that.
Okay, we have a second. Uh, is there any discussion on the motion? Nice job, Gavin. All right, uh, we're going to move to roll call vote. Uh, Mark Bloomfield.
Hi.
Sam Fitch.
Hi.
Sam Libby is an I. Gavin McMillan.
Hi.
Dan Hilton.
Hi.
And Leishan Gargano.
Hi.
Okay, the motion passes. Thank you all. Thank you, Jasmine, uh, to the public and staff. Okay, that's our last document of the evening. Um, is there anything else to discuss or a motion to adjourn?
Yeah, we adjourn. This is Commissioner Gargano.
Second, yeah, thank you, Mark. Hey, uh, Mark, would you like to vote? Hi, thanks.
Oh.
You already voted. Thank you. My Sam Fitch.
Hi.
Sam Libby, I, Gavin.
Hi.
Dan.
Hi.
Leishan, thank you all. Have a good evening.
You too.
All right, thanks y'all. Have a good one.
Thanks, commissioners.
Thank you all. Really appreciate the comments.